Fix it. Yep. There you go. All right, I'll give it back to you.
Okay.
You are now the host.
Okay, um, is Gail on? Gail, is that you 2:07?
I'm here.
Great, thank you. Okay, um, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Manchester Planning Board. I'm Sarah Creighton, I'm Vice Chair, and I will be chairing tonight's meeting. Ron, Mr. Giacomo is unavailable. Um, so the first thing is, the meeting is being recorded. Hopefully, everybody got a notice of that, and I will call the meeting to order. Um, so roll call vote, Laura Tenney.
Here.
Christine.
Here.
Oh, sorry. Christine Delicia.
Here.
Mary Foley.
Here.
Gary Gilbert. And Ron is not here. Great. Thank you. The first thing, a couple of things as we move forward through tonight's meeting. Any comments will be taken through the chair, so this is a virtual meeting. Raise your hand and we'll try to get to you. However, there are not any public hearings with public comment tonight. There, we will take new public comments on a couple of issues, but this is not a public hearing on any of these issues tonight. That's okay, so I want to acknowledge receipt of correspondence. We've had several from Lorraine Iavoni, including one that came today at 9:30 that are in our packet municipal notices from Hamilton ZBA, Hamilton Planning Board, and the Essex ZBA. Any other public correspondence that we should acknowledge?
Yeah, Sarah, could I mention some that weren't on the agenda?
Sure.
And I seem to have lost my raise hand function, but... Yeah, sorry, because the Zoom updated and it's gone, so I don't know, but, um... Yeah, you mentioned, so Lorraine had sent some about concerns about the August 8th, about educating the public on the zoning changes. Then Lorraine Iavoni sent, again, concern about when will the work groups be to study the impacts. There was also an email that was on the agenda about the purchase of Shingle Hill, and MECT actually responded to that to the board as well. Then there was, on August 15th, the Board of Health member forwarded to the Planning Board the proposed drinking water protection regulations. And then Tom Moore, an abutter of One Windermere Park, sent an email with concerns about safety with fencing there.
Great. Thank you for keeping track of those. Um, at this point, I'm going to allow any public comment on items that are not on the agenda with limited time. I suspect that several people are here about Spyrock Hill, so let's hold that for right now. Any other public comment? Other members of the board, help me see if there's anybody. I'm seeing none, thank you. Um, so we have before us a approval not required application for one Spyrock Hill. Um, is the applicant here? Okay. Hi, and can you identify yourself, please?
Yeah, I am Elizabeth B. Kinder. I am a representative of the estate of Elizabeth B. Kinder.
Okay, great. And are you presenting the A&R tonight?
Yep.
Okay, great. It might be easiest if I pull up the plan rather than just then I don't have to worry about who I'm sharing, if I'm sharing screens, so hold on.
Okay.
Okay, can people see that? Make it a little bigger. Oh. Okay, Ms. Kinder, why don't you go ahead and explain what you're proposing?
Um, okay, well, as you can see from our application, we meet all of the acreage width and frontage requirements to divide one Spyrock Hill road into two lots. Despite the fact that we included a driveway design stamped by an engineer in our April 11th application, the viability of our C Street frontage was questioned. This issue has since been resolved by the town's legal counsel and correspondence written by Michelle Rendazzo of KP Law. The only possible and hypothetical issue that Ms. Rendazzo identified as a possible and hypothetical basis for denying our A&R application is if the ledge and grade were such that they impeded threshold access to the lot. After two face-to-face visits and several emails with the building inspector, Mr. Orlando, we ascertained that a permit was not required to excavate the stumps, dirt, and rocks that prevented our vehicle from driving onto our property from the C Street frontage. So... Now, as conveyed by the image in our application of our vehicle parked on the lot in the A&R application, threshold access actually exists. In pursuit of this threshold access, we inadvertently excavated more than we were allowed. Mr. Orlando informed us that the rocks that we kept on the site to retain future gardens were included in the 20 cubic yards that we were allowed to remove without a permit. So per his instructions, we remedied that situation by returning 10.5 cubic yards of fill onto the site. And so the image of the vehicle achieving threshold access was taken once those 10.5 cubic yards were back in place. That image does not mean that we've decided on C Street for our driveway. A feasibility study for a common drive on Spyrock Hill is underway, but the location of a curb cut and a drive is not part of this A&R application. To that point, the board's April 11th motion also questioned our frontage based on the adequacy of the proposed access and what future permits would be required. Michelle Rendazzo responded to those points with the following, and this is a quote. "Other factors, such as the quality of the access or the lack of required permits, are beyond the limited scope of an A&R view." So having settled the issue of the viability of our C Street frontage, we've met all of the requirements for this A&R application. We are aware that the endorsement of the A&R is merely the first step in a very long process. We will continue to work with the Planning Board and the building inspector to move forward with building our home. I want to thank you for all of the time and energy that you've put into this. That's all I have. If you have any questions, let me know.
You referenced some images in, were those in the, included in the packet?
Yeah, we did. We made 10 copies. There was, I mean, if you want, you can share. Should I share screen?
Yeah, I'm gonna let you share.
Okay, hold on. Okay.
I think I have to... I can't make it. You just don't get off the meeting, please, until you make me back the host. Because unfortunately, I can only make you the host. So is there any way I can make her, just allow her to share? I do not want to make somebody who's not in the meeting, otherwise we end up potentially ending the meeting.
Um...
All right, well, Liz, please don't, Laura?
Yeah, I have downloaded those. I have downloaded that photo. I think I could probably screen share if you can just give me a minute.
Yeah, I'm gonna invite you. Thanks, that's better.
Sorry, Sarah, I see I was on mute as I was talking. I said I think this room is set up with some different parameters, which is why we're not allowed to do that, so apologies. Sounds like...
Yeah, I think it's better. On the meeting and see the images, that would be... And I believe we have, tonight, we have Robyn Stein from KP Law with us. Is that correct? Robyn, are you on?
I am.
Great, thank you.
Let me know if you have questions.
Sarah, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, this is the application that was in our packets. I'm gonna scroll down a couple pages into the photos. I think this is what Ms. Kinder is representing. If there's other materials, I can look for those and bring them up.
Yeah, so that's, our truck has achieved threshold access. This is the C Street. There's the stop sign is right here. And, I mean, that's, I think that's what was in question according to the letter from Michelle Rendazzo. And so, you know, we met the other requirements, which were width of the lot, acreage. So the frontage was the big deal, and specifically whether or not we had threshold access. And so that is our vehicle having accessed the lot.
Okay, um, I'll take, uh... Questions, I guess, or comments from the board? For starters, thank you, Laura. Mary, did you have, it looks like you're muted. Laura, go ahead.
When we last met, we were talking about adequacy of the physical access and the constraints that some of the precedent cases had defined in terms of constraints of physical access, which I read is a little different from the threshold access. I can see that the truck is now on the private side of the street. I don't see a way to, that the truck is going to further access the lot from that point. And I wondered if that could be addressed in terms of that obstruction to access further into the lot.
Um...
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Kinder.
Well, we are going to have to design a driveway. So there's going to be either, you know, a driveway coming off of Spyrock Hill, and we'll have to redesign the current driveway, or that we're going to have to carry on and do the driveway that was designed in our previous application. I actually have that image, but I don't know if I can share it, but it was in our April 11th application. We had a, I mean, there is a possibility of building the driveway. I don't... My understanding from Michelle's letter was that the quality of access, or, you know, whether there's an existing driveway right now, isn't part of this application. We are merely trying to divide the lot into two lots. We will have to address those things further down the road, but today we are just focused on meeting the requirements of an approval not required application.
Okay, Sue? To Brown?
I was, thank you, Sarah. I was just gonna suggest that Robyn, you know, respond as to whether any further access is needed, if it was, if there was still a question, but, thank you.
I think we probably are going to have a couple of questions for Robyn, so maybe we can consolidate them. I'm gonna just take the chair's prerogative for a second and frame for Robyn at least one of my questions, which is, the applicant has done a curb cut without an approval, has removed soil without approval under the bylaw in order to give us a picture of a truck barely on the site. So if you ignore the bylaw to try to prove your point, um, that doesn't sit very well with me. I'm not sure it's jurisdictional, but I would like at some point to have Robyn weigh in on that. Okay, maybe we can make a list of questions for Robyn, and we're gonna hear from the board members now, and then we'll come back to the applicant or to Robyn. Mary, go ahead.
Yeah, I had a quick question and then, and then a couple of comments. Could the applicant clarify where they're saying they have frontage for the second lot?
Um, do you have that image again? It basically stretches all along C Street from the stop sign all the way down to the Orals property, which is, used to be the old station house. So it's all along here.
Okay, so I just, I wanted to clarify, if you were saying there was frontage on C Street or Spyrock, and I would say that I agree with what Sarah had just said. My thoughts are that the applicant did not apply for a curb cut, but instead violated our laws to show some sort of access. My review of this, I believe what Town Council wrote back in April of this year still applies. Threshold access to the lot cannot be achieved without significant earth and ledge removal, which is what they noted in their memo to the board, and earth and ledge removal, which... It also seems like you did earth and ledge removal, which appears to be within 200 feet of a way open to the public. So again, not seeing anything different, I still see what applied back in, I think it was April, is still the case.
So maybe I can turn to Ms. Stein to at least address the, her read of the legal issues. Robyn?
Yep, just gonna make... About that. So, yeah, I mean, you have Michelle's memo. I'm sure you can tell from seeing that and from your previous experience that these cases are all extremely fact-specific. It's hard to get clear direction just from them, because we read them, and sometimes the facts go one way, and sometimes they go another way. You know, the bottom line is, you have to make a decision about whether or not this access is illusory or not. And that kind of comes down to, is it truly illusory and that there is not, you know, adequate access versus there's access, but it could be better. And if it's, you know, there's access, but it could be better or more ideal, then you should endorse the plan. If the board determines there really isn't access, the access is illusory, then you can deny the plan. As to the question, you know, and I can say, I mean, there are cases that involve steep slopes. One of them also involved a guard rail, so it's a little bit different than this case. There is a case where the court said it was okay to deny an A&R because they couldn't get access to the buildable portion of the lot, but that was very factually different than this. It involved a division of land in the 12 lots, and some of them had 2,000-foot-long driveways. So it is hard to predict how the prior cases would apply. Really, the bottom line is, does the board, you know, find that the access is illusory? Or does the board find that, you know, it's accessible, it just could be better? You know, and that is kind of where the line falls. You know, but it's a judgment call for the board. It's hard to, it's hard to say more on that. You know, a couple of your questions about the curb cuts and what have you may be better directed to Paul generally about what needs to happen there. It's my understanding that any of the zoning issues from the removal activities have been cured. And again, your review is limited to frontage and access issues, and so that doesn't give the lots any right under zoning. That doesn't mean they're compliant with zoning. That doesn't mean they're excused from getting all their permits. So, well, certainly, I see the point that there have been other violations. I don't think that that plays into your analysis this evening. Paul can probably speak better, and I believe he's on, I think I saw him on, you know, to the kind of next steps or other items if folks have questions, but I don't think that they are actually germane to your analysis.
I guess my question was more that, the photo, as we look at that photo, the only way that photo was achieved was through a violation.
I understand, I understand your point, but it's not an A&R question, in my opinion. It's also my understanding, not the curb cut, but the earth removal part has been cured, is my understanding. So if I'm wrong again, Paul can jump in on that.
Sarah, can I ask a question?
Sure, absolutely.
I could not find how to raise a hand here, so...
At the bottom now, it's moved. You have to kind of hover at the bottom, but nonetheless, go ahead, Gary.
Thank you.
The way I understand A&R is, there's nothing that compels anybody to have their primary access off of their frontage, nor is there anything that, and this is, these are questions for Town Council, pretty much. I also don't see anything written that says you have to have your driveway or primary access off of your frontage. That, how you get to your building site is a separate issue. It could be from a different road that abuts the property. In this case, there's two adequate roads on either side of the property. So how the, where the driveway ends up being and how they actually access the site is a sort of a separate issue from the granting the A&R. I don't believe that they violated any laws. They moved us some stones out of the way and moved some dirt, but none of that, as was just said, didn't violate anything. Um, so it's a, it's a weird thing within the A&R laws, like where do they have to? Where, what does this access mean? And Town Council mentioned threshold access, although that's not written in our town law. It's not in the state statute, you know, which I've printed out recently in red. It's a term, I guess, that has evolved that Town Council uses regarding our town in a general sense. And what does it mean? What does threshold access mean? Does it mean that a Mini Cooper can somehow cross the frontage, and therefore you've got threshold access? And then how they access the building site for a building permit is something for a separate conversation later on? I hope those questions are answerable.
Yeah, Robyn, you want to just respond?
So I think I've already addressed the second of the two questions as best I can, you know, in that you have to make a determination about whether or not access to this lot is illusory, and it's truly not accessible, whether it is accessible, it just could be better. And we've given you examples of cases on that. I've given some examples, but it really falls to the board to make that decision. I haven't looked previously, and so I would actually pause on, he might want to chime in on this, about what your zoning bylaw requires as far as access from your frontage or not. That's usually something that's specified in the zoning law. I'm trying to take a quick look now, but it hadn't been raised before. So I don't know, again, the building commissioner is on and wants to comment on that.
Um, Paul, yeah, go ahead and give us any input, please.
Two things. One thing is that when the applicant did excavate the property, they did excavate more than was allowed by the plan, by the zoning bylaw. They subsequently brought in some more fill to be in compliance with the zoning bylaw, so they're in compliance now. And the other thing is that the zoning bylaw does not require you to access through your frontage. It does allow you to access through a common driveway, as long as that common driveway, in this case, if it was served by two lots, is, has the opinion of the Planning Board and myself to be adequate to service the needs of the property. So, so if the board were to approve this application tonight, in order to build a house on that site, the applicant would either need a curb cut permit or access through C Street, or a, the opinion of the Planning Board and myself for a common driveway to access through Spyrock Hill.
So can I just ask the, a question, maybe Paul and Robyn to, to clarify? You can access your, your building, to build a building, you have to provide access, and that access can be from a common driveway or from your frontage. But that's not the question here. The question is here is whether or not we have a approval not required. An approval not required says that you have to have access over your frontage, and that fronted, that access cannot be illusionary. Is that correct? So there are two separate things. Yes, you can access through a common driveway in the future, but in this, that does not, a common driveway access does not entitle you to A&R. Is that correct? I mean, if I have a cliff, an absolute cliff, um, that doesn't entitle me to A&R, because even if I come in with a common driveway, I would have to come in with a subdivision plan.
Sarah, can I rephrase the question?
Yes, please do.
So it seems to me, it's a little bit the cart falling in front of the horse here. If, if the application come in for an A&R using the common driveway, they would have sufficient frontage on C Street to allow us to approve that A&R, even though they're accessing it from a common driveway and back. And I think Gary made that point, and I think he's correct. But this isn't what's happening here. Apparently, there's some reason why that common driveway is not readily accessible right now. And, and so trying to say that the cliff face is accessible, I think, is illusory. That could change if the common driveway access were allowed. And so, you know, I think we're in kind of a funny situation, where a sort of a, there's, there's no... You know, it's like a catch-22 that we're in. Unless you come back, Ms. Kinder, with a proposal to allow access to that lot from the common driveway, in which case, then I think we have no, no choice but to approve it.
I just have a question, because I, we applied in April 11th with a stamped drawing from an engineer that, you know, I mean, he's a professional, that showed us that able to build a driveway on C Street. We don't necessarily have to use that driveway, I understand that. But part of the process is it has to, it has to be possible. And so I think that it isn't a catch-22. It is possible, an engineer has said so.
It's possible, but you'd require a curb cut and a special permit.
But your attorney said other factors, such as the lack of required permits, are beyond the limited scope of an A&R review. So that will come down the line, absolutely. But today, for this A&R, we don't need that.
Okay, so let's not debate between back forth. I actually have that plan open. I'm gonna share it. And, oh, Laura, you need to give me back control, sorry. This electronic is challenging.
Hi, I'm Cher. Can you share?
So this is not part of this application, for one thing, so I'm just, this is reference-only. And this is my opinion, that this is the garage shown here. So therefore, access only over here is insufficient, given the topography in my, this is my opinion I'm stating. This is, again, this was, this is what Ms. Kinder was just referring to. The second thing is, if I look at this, this is 20 feet, and the topo distances between these lines is 50, is eight or 10 feet, hard to tell. These, therefore, it's a 50% grade, 50 or 40, depending on whether it's eight or 10. A 40% grade from this point to this point, a significant retaining wall that, and excavation or fill in this area that is subject to our bylaw for cut and fill, given that it is well within the front setback. So I think just because it's drawn on a plan, in my opinion, is how, it doesn't mean that it's, it may be able to be constructed in some, someplace. But that, so this is the plan that was referenced. It's not part of this package, so it's more by reference. So hopefully, it's helpful. Let's see, other board members? Um, uh, let's see, other board members who haven't spoken, we've heard from Laura, Mary, um, Chris. Uh, Mary, back to you.
Thanks Erin, um, I, I think you and Chris kind of, um, said some of the things that I was going to say with the um, kind of circular debate, um, you know, common driveway before an A and R. Um, et cetera. So, um, I think if, if we're looking at what is in front of us with the frontage being on C Street. I think, you know, reviewing the earth removal bylaws and our curb cut bylaws. And other bylaws, again, just because a drawing is there, does not make it a clear threshold and, um, you, it, so we're kind of having to put that aside. Um, and so it's left with, is there? Is it illusory or, um, clear threshold? And I think it's pretty obvious. And so, um, yeah, I, I think you can't fall back on, well, there could be a potential in the future for a common driveway. Because we don't know that. That's not anything we would know at this point.
Uh, Christina.
Sorry, first off, I would like to apologize for not having my screen on. My internet is bad, so I can only hear 52%, but I think I'm catching it. And I just wanted to mention that I'm, I'm agreeing with what's being said, so I don't think I need to repeat that. So, um, I'm agreeing with Mary and Sarah at this point. Thanks.
Um, okay, I believe, uh, Tim McDonald, are you, uh, speaking for the, for the Kinder applicant as well?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, do you have any new information?
Yes, yes. Yes, two things. Uh, one thing is you keep referring to either a curb cut and driveway access from C Street or a common driveway from, uh, Spyrock Hill. Um, my understanding, and I'd love it if Paul Orlando or Mary could back this up. My understanding is that no indication or, um, information about a common driveway or a driveway is a part of the, uh, A and R process. So, the idea that we're even talking about whether, um, we can do a common driveway on Spyrock or a driveway off C Street. Is just simply background information. It can't be reason to deny the A and R. My second point is that, um, and I'd love Paul Orlando to, and, and Suda back this up as well. Um, they've been very clear with us that the driveway that you just showed Mary, um, the, uh, from C Street. Is an excluded activity once the curb cut permit is approved for that site. So that means that the issue of, uh, fill and removal of soil or bringing in of soil is not the same. It, it's an excluded activity, which means that those, it does not require a special permit. And those issues of fill or cut are not the same because it's an excluded activity. So because of those two points, it just backs up what Michelle Randazzo said in her letter, which is that the purview of the A and R is about whether threshold access has been achieved. And by the way, threshold access means that you can cross the property line. It doesn't mean that we have to demonstrate that there's a driveway, even though we did, uh, that could be built there. So I just think it's really important that we all get on the same page about what we're voting on when we get to that point about why this would be supported or denied. It, it can't have anything to do with the driveways.
I, I'm gonna, um, agree with you that driveways are not, um, part of A and Rs and I because I disagree with some of the things that have been said about the common driveway. So that's not what's before us. So I do agree with you that driveway, I'm just gonna, and, and, um, so, um, but I think we have a, if you had, given that you had a violation, I think that is un-inaccurate for you to say that you didn't, that you don't need a permit to make that curb cut.
That's, that's, that's not correct, uh, uh, Mary. And, and again, I would, I think the, uh, Paul Orlando can speak to this. Um, this was, this was, this was a misunderstanding of whether rocks which are not removed, but are included in the removal. So we actually removed 18 yards of soil. But we moved 10 yards of stone 10 feet away on the same property. And what Paul said was that 10, that 10 yards of rock is included in your 10 yards. So, so not, it was a notice of a violation. We solved it in the next couple of days. That, that should have nothing to do with whether the fact that, whether, whether we have demonstrated that we can drive a car onto our property.
Okay, great, thank you. We are in receipt also of a letter from neighbor, from a Butters. Um, I'm, and I think we have, it was a repeat of what we saw in April. So I'm going to take any, um, comments that are front, yeah, just a minute, Gary. I'm gonna um, comments from, uh, we'll have a, make sure you remind me to come back to you, Gary. Um, but, um, I'll take comments that are substantially different than what we've already heard. Um, or then from the letters that we've received, just in interest of time. Um, Scott Susko, do you have something that is different?
Yeah, I think I do, and I appreciate everyone's time tonight. Um, you know, I, I think Mr. McDonald and, and you, Mrs. Creighton were correct in, in terms of narrowing, uh, the issue. Uh, I understand the issue is uh, you cannot get an A and R without adequate, adequate frontage. Um, and you can't count frontage without access at the time of the request. And so the case law that KP Law, uh, pulled together really laid out, uh, sort of a standard from, from various cases talking about, and I'll use the words from the cases, the adequate practical and present access. And, and, and then by negative implication, not illusory. And I would say, uh, KP Law, uh, focused on this Quirkerin case. Um, and I think it's, while applicable, um, certainly it's on the correct subject matter. It's much different from this situation. This Quirkerin case talked about wetlands that were in the middle of the property and you could drive a vehicle, actually there was a driveway that you could drive on there. So that access, that vehicular access, which was again, adequate, practical, present access, uh, was, it was, um, was available. And so Quirkerin, I think is the wrong case. I think it's completely distinguishable from this situation, which is much more uh, similar to the Polis case that we cited in our letter. And the Polis case focused on a guard rail and a really big slope or said in the other direction, a cliff. And I think, uh, what's really important is that the potential to put a driveway in to create access is not enough. And nor is a parking spot that in my mind, uh, fits squarely within the definition of illusory. Because it's sort of jammed in with a four-wheel drive vehicle, taking, the picture taken at a certain ankle, angle. That, again, is not adequate, practical or really present. And so in my mind, that, you know, we, we, the letter submitted by the Butters. I think strongly suggests that you can't count frontage that without, uh, present access. And we argue that that access is not uh, fulfilled by jamming a car in there. Uh, I think we have to think about policy issues about what does that mean? Is it practical? I would say no, because that turn on C Street creates a real danger. Um, is it adequate? I'm not sure, uh, if any other vehicle could get up there. And so again, the neighbors were against, the, the, many of the neighbors, not all, but the signatories to the letter are against, uh, this building for other reasons. We're worried about a precedent and too many houses on this street. We're worried about access on Spyrock Hill. But the technical issue that I think we all should focus on is Mr. McDonald and you, Mrs. Creighton said, is really, is there adequate frontage that's accessible? And we argue, no, it's not adequate. It's, uh, not practical and it's certainly not present. And saying you could put a driveway in is not enough. So again, I'll, I'll cut it short. I know it's a late Monday now, so thank you for your time.
All right, um, are there, uh, any, uh, I don't want to just hear from neighbors who, um, are going to reiterate the same thing. Is there any new, uh, other considerations that, um, that we should hear from, um, from others, neighbors or otherwise? Um, okay, back to, uh, you, Gary.
Um, I believe that town council needs to help us here and I don't think that they're being clear enough and in making some distinctions, it's, um, excuse me. Um, it's, it, it, we, they, nobody to get an AR that clearly do not correct me if I'm wrong, town council, but you do not need to have a driveway to your building site. Um, and as far as I know, you do not need to have a driveway of any length at all to get an A and R. I, I'm just trying to be fair across the board. Um, to any person in town that may apply for an A and R. And I believe town council could help the town avoid a lawsuit here. Um, and be fair to those involved by defining the term access they used. I think that needs to be clarified because people are very quickly assuming that that means access by vehicles to get to a building.
So there are cases, as I said earlier, in which the court has said that you can look at whether or not the buildable portion of the lot is accessible. Um, and again, all of these cases are factually different from each other, as been pointed out. Uh, you know, the Pulo's case is the one that I was referencing earlier when I mentioned the case that involved both um, a guard rail and a steep slope. You don't have a guard rail here. You have a steep slope here. There is, um, the Walker Development Corp. case, which is a 2007 unpublished appeals court case, so it's more limited to its own facts. Um, it's not precedential value, but it it gives guidance. Um, and that case essentially said the planning board wasn't bound to provide A and R endorsement based on an applicant's determination that access over a steep slope may be attainable in the future. So again, I think you have, you, you do have some leeway in looking at whether or not the site is really accessible from this road. And I can't say what a court would ultimately do with these facts. But I can say that there are cases on, on both sides of planning boards endorsing and not endorsing. This is a challenging situation. But I do think that you have some leeway to look at this and say is this access illusory? Is it really accessible or not? And, um, to make an argument, one way or the other, whether or not um, you know, it's really the board's decision on how far that access has to go. But I mean, there, there are cases on either sides. You know, this doesn't involve wetlands, so it makes it a little bit different than some of the guidance that is out there. But you are definitely dealing with a sleep, a steep slope here. And, um, you know, whether or not the, the property can, is or can be made accessible to the buildable portion may be something that you can consider. Um, but I can't say for certainty what a court will do with that because I do think that there's different guidance in the case on both sides.
Okay. Uh, Gary, I think do you have anything new?
Well, that I think where we're heading in the direction of is making a judgment call whether we think, gee, this seems like a difficult driveway to build versus an absolutely impossible situation like a cliff, a true cliff. And I don't think we should fall into that camp where we have to make this sort of existential decision. Gee, that looks kind of hard to build, therefore we'll deny it. Um, it doesn't make any sense to me. I think there should be stronger direction that we're getting from you than that.
Well, let's, uh, let's leave it there. Um, Mary, do you have anything new?
Yeah, I had a, uh, I had a question for, um, town council that you know, this A and R is coming to us and, and what you were just speaking about, the build, access to the buildable portion of the lot. Could we approve the A and R, but clarify that this lot is not buildable? We've done that with other A and Rs.
Well, again, that's not, it's not the purview of the planning board, um, to determine if it's buildable or not buildable in an A and R situation. That comes down to whether or not, um, it's buildable under zoning, if it can obtain any other necessary permits that are needed. Um, I, it is my understanding that a curb cut permit is still necessary. And, and again, Paul can chime in and if, correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding was the zoning issue on the rock removal on the fill had been curbed, but a curb cut permit itself will still be necessary. But that's not a reason, that, that's not part of the decision-making tonight. And so, um, you know, for the A and R statute, chapter 81, section 41P does let you put an explanation on a plan as to why you chose to endorse it. But, um, no, you can't, it, it wouldn't be an A and R if the lot wasn't buildable because it wouldn't be a division of land into two lots. And so that, that's outside the purview of the planning board.
Can I ask you a, a follow-up question there? And that is that, um, the, given that the curb cut app, uh, as shown would come right into a a complicated intersection, um, I don't, we don't have a curb cut application in front of us, but what, at least as I look at it, I think we wouldn't endorse a curb cut application in that location into the middle of a you know, uh, I think a state road and a, um, still slope and other things. So, um, I, I don't know how, I think we can't address the curb cut issue without an application, but um, but, but at least as I look at it, I think a curb cut there doesn't make any kind of safe sense at all.
Curb cuts here, um,
Gary, wait, Gary.
A lot of opinions about what's not on the table, Sarah. That's not really fair.
Okay, thank you. It's not, in Gary's opinion, what I just, it's not fair. Thank you.
Sarah, did you want me to address that or no? I wasn't sure if that was a question posed to me.
Yeah, sure, I'll, if you can take it as a question and
Sure. So again, I, the need to obtain a curb cut, the ability to obtain a curb cut is not part of your analysis period. Um, that'll be a separate discussion. And if you endorse the A and R, that's not an endorsement of safety and a curb cut or anything else. We're just separate processes.
But does it allow us to say that access is illusionary? If we can sort of foresee down the road that a curb cut in that location will be dangerous?
I think that would be a stretch, in my opinion. And, you know, I think it's, that's a different question. Is it, the access is either physically available to the site or not. Um, and I do think you have some leeway in taking into consideration whether or not you can access the buildable portion of the lot. But, you know, I caution that a court might not agree because these cases are, are very factual and very much, um, all over the place.
Okay, um, Paul, you help us out again?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
I, I think right now, this, a curb cut or a driveway is not before the, the board. Um, the fact, if, if the board does approve an A and R, that doesn't mean that you have a buildable lot here. You still have to apply for a building permit and you have to provide access to that lot. And access will either be through a curb cut that would need to be approved by the planning board or a common driveway. And, and that's not, that's something that would take place at the building permit application stage. Not, not at the A and R stage.
Yep, okay, thank you. Uh, MBTS, um, is there anything new, um, to add to this conversation?
Yeah, it's, uh, Erica Brown from the Manchester Cricket, and, and this is directed to you, Sarah. I can't follow this because people are not introducing themselves. Can you please ask people to introduce themselves? Tim McDonald? I don't know who he is. Scott Susko? I have no idea who he is. So, and they're not introducing themselves. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Tim, can you just identify your, um, uh, role here, just that portion?
Sure, sure. I'm Tim McDonald. I'm married to Liz Kinder, so part of the application.
Thank you. And Scott Susko, I believe is a neighbor on Spyrock Hill.
Yes, I live at six Spyrock Hill and I was one of the signatories to the letter opposing the A and R.
Okay, great.
Can I ask, just, okay.
I think we've got the issues pretty well nailed down. Um, do the board members have any other, um, comments? That, or questions? Um, Laura.
Thanks, Sarah. I'm still looking for some help from council on, um, this practical access. I mean, the threshold access is a new term. We were not using that before and we were considering practical access to the lot and the physical constraints, uh, that are, um, that are provided by, you know, steep slopes, um, topography such as it's on the C Street frontage. And so, I, I don't know whether that's, I mean, illusory. I, I do see a four-wheel drive vehicle is able to you know, kind of back up onto that area that's been cleared. Does that qualify as practical access? I'm not really there yet, but I would like some more guidance from um, Council Stein on what is practical access and how do we determine that? Um, and it's simply, it's simply the ability to to, um, move a four-wheel drive vehicle across the lot line. And then you can't go any farther. Is that it? I know we're not trying to determine a driveway, but it just, it still doesn't feel to me like practical access and I, and I could use a I know we're not trying to determine a driveway, but it just, it still doesn't feel to me like practical access and I, and I could use a little guidance on that. Thank you.
So I, I'm gonna pause this. I don't know that there's much more I can say. Um, I, I don't want you to get tripped on the threshold notion. I'm not, I can't speak for what Michelle meant, but again, you just need to look at whether or not you think access to this property is illusory, is real or not. Is it a situation where someone can truly, from their front, from the frontage, access this lot, or is it a situation where they can't? Is it, and that's really, it's just a, it does come down to a judgment call for the board to make. Um, and I, I, I don't really, I'm sorry, I just don't feel like there's too much more I can say on this at this point.
I have one other question for either maybe Paul Orlando or Chuck Dam, and that is do we know where, uh, how far off the, um, pavement the town line is?
Yes, but, um, I don't know that exactly. That's something that would have to be shown on the plan that would be submitted when they apply for a building permit to us.
Because there is a possibility in my, my mind that that truck is shown on, in part on town land.
Uh, this is Chuck, uh, Chuck Dam, D P W. Um, I can't say that I know for a fact where the property line is in the street. Uh, but as Paul said, it would, it would be something that would need to be depicted. I would imagine that the survey is done today. Uh, at least laid out that line and it may be staked in the field. Uh, but, so I would have assumed that it's on that plan already, but I could be wrong.
I can just add, I had the, um, surveyor come out after we removed the, the, uh, three feet of, uh, retaining wall and after we removed the soil. So the plan is um, relative to where it is now. And as you can see on the plan, the wall is within our, the property line and therefore so is the vehicle. Uh, so I just wanted to clarify that as well. Charles, I believe you told us that, um, uh, because we just specifically asked if, if D P W would be okay with a curb cut there. Given the information we gave you, and if you don't mind, you, you told me that you would have no problem with it.
So just to be clear, that the curb cut jurisdiction now lies with the planning board, so. Um, but we're not talking, we're there, um, okay. Um, any other, uh, things from the board? I think we've heard from the applicant. I think we've, um,
I just wanted to ask a question of Mr. Only.
I'm sorry, who's speaking?
It's Elizabeth Kinder.
Well, you ask it of me and then we'll decide.
Um, well, Mr. Only seemed to say that if we submitted a design with the common driveway, then, then it, we would have access and then you would give us the A and R. I just want to be clear. Is that, is that what you were saying, Mr. Only?
Yes, that's what I was saying. We would have no justification for turning down the A and R if you showed access real practical access to the lot. And it does not have to, it does not have to be across the frontage.
Okay. I'm, I'm glad to know that. Thank you.
Um, I think that we're not talking about that and we're not going to prejudge that. That's another legal question, and I think we will take that up when that eventuality happens. Um, I have a different, but, but let's, that's not, that's not before us. That is not before us. Let's not get in that. Um, so I don't really want to go down and, and have a conversation about that because it's.
Sarah, the question of access is put before us by town council. I think it's a very, very simple question to ask them here and now that if they came in with an approvable common driveway in conjunction with an A and R application, would that provide, uh, meet their definition of access?
So I guess, but let me frame it a different, that you've heard Gary's question. And also my question would be if that common drive is not off the frontage and doesn't change the illusionary access of the frontage, does a common driveway negate that? Or would you have to come with a subdivision plan? So May, that's a question for you, Robin.
So I mean, that's, that's obviously, it's beyond what we looked at for this evening, and I'd have to look at, um, you know, your zoning bylaw and, and some other things to, to comment to the board on that, but also that's something the applicant, um, in, in all due respect, needs to kind of take a look at and figure out for himself because um, we really can't in, in a meeting here or at all, um, be advising an applicant how to proceed with, you know, their application. And so, I mean, that's something the applicant may want to look at. That may be something for further conversation, but, um, it's not something sitting here tonight that I can weigh in on.
Okay, um, I'm gonna take one last thing. Christina, do you have anything new?
Um, I just wanted to say something for the record, um, specifically to a comment by Mr. McDonald. Um, the planning board is the authority that makes a curb cut decision. Um, Chuck Dam, we do defer to him. He is a professional engineer, but the final decision is the planning boards and this intersection has been, um, the result of many studies, concerns, complete streets, projects. So, um, to say that Chuck Dam had no problem with it is fine, but, um, it ultimately is the planning board's decision and that hasn't come before the planning board. So, thank you.
Great, thanks. Um, is the, uh, anybody want to entertain a motion? I'll entertain a motion on this matter. Laura? If nobody wants to, I will, um, turn the, ask, uh, Chris, can I ask you to chair the next session, that section then? And I'll make a motion. Nope, you're muted.
Laura's got her hand up.
Oh, Laura, go ahead.
Okay, I'm, I'm looking just narrowly, so I'm trying to talk this motion through as I'm going. I'm looking at the, um, A and R plan for Spyrock Hill dated eight eighteen twenty-two and the frontage along C Street. Given the.
Take a straw poll. Do we need to make a motion or do we want to? Do we, do we feel confident that this is going to be a successful motion or? Is there an idea?
Why don't we, let's, let's hear her out.
Okay, um, so I'm looking at the the narrow issue of practical access to this lot from the C Street frontage. And I'm looking at the existing conditions, topographical lines, um, showing the ledge. And to me, based on that, not based on any of the other discussion we've had tonight, it appears to me there is not practical access from the C Street frontage, if that's being what is requested. So, you're gonna make a statement. Do you want, I can turn it into a motion?
Turn it into a motion, please.
I say still moved and I second that. Do you have it, Gail?
Okay, so I'm gonna restate a motion, which is to deny the act, the A and R application dated uh, of the plan dated eight eighteen, and the application is received, I believe, September first, but somebody please check that. Um, for the, um, application of the, uh, approval not required on C Street for, um, the plan of land of Elizabeth, the estate of Elizabeth Kinder with them, um, uh, give me the scale here. Scale one inch equals forty feet, um, as denied due to lack of practical and adequate access.
There are technically, I don't think we deny it. I think we're just not endorsing it.
So we, we do not endorse the plan. Okay. But a failure to do anything is a constructive approval, so we have to take action if we want to. Okay, so the motion is to fail, to not endorse the plan of land as, as listed. Uh, Gail, is that clear?
It's clear and recorded.
Okay, um, so we have a motion from Laura and a, or a motion from Christina, I guess, stating Laura's motion and maybe a second from Laura. Maybe the other way around. Okay, um, any other discussion that is, um, on the motion? So a yes, um, I'm gonna take a roll call vote. A yes vote is a vote to not endorse the plan. And a, uh, no vote would be, uh, would go back and make a second motion, I think, for endorsement. Um, everybody clear? Um, Christina?
Yes.
Uh, Laura?
Yes.
Gary?
No. No.
Okay, thank you, Gary. Mary?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And the, uh, vice chair votes yes. The plan has not been endorsed, um. So Gail and Sue, whatever appropriate, um, paperwork is needed, you can, do you have what you need?
So just as a reminder, the certificate of the board's action needs to be filed with the town clerk within twenty-one days of when the application was filed.
Yeah. Okay, great. Well, thank you for, um, everybody's patience.
And just, just also that notice should be given to the applicant as well. So written, the statute requires um, that if the board shall determine that in its opinion, the plan requires approval, meaning it doesn't qualify for A and R approval. And it shall within twenty-one days of such middle, give written notice of its determination to the clerk of the city or town and the person submitting the plan.
So is the motion more correctly that the plan is actually requires subdivision approval rather than it is not endorsed by, isn't that the official? Um,
I mean,
how do we write the motion? What's the correct motion? It said it retains subdivision approval, right?
Yeah, I, I think what you're finding is that it doesn't qualify for, um, endorsement under section eighty-one P because it does qualify as a subdivision because the access doesn't meet the exceptions to what qualifies as a subdivision.
Okay. So can the record, um, reflect that language, Gail? Can you just state that again, Robin, please?
So technically what you're saying is that the plan does not qualify for endorsement under general chapter forty-one, section eighty-one P because it does not meet the exception to the definition of subdivision under general law, chapter forty-one, section eighty-one L. Unless the division of these two lots does constitute a subdivision.
Okay, great. Thank you. So just for people who are not familiar with, very simply, plant, when you divide land, you can do it two ways. One's a subdivision, which has a whole set of rules. Or the other is an approval not required because the rules um, are those that we've just been discussing. So we've just decided that this does not qualify as an approval not required. But it could come back as a subdivision plan um, to divide it in a different way. Okay, um, thank you, uh, Robin. Um, I don't believe we have any other matters for town council tonight.
See you later.
Thank you. Okay, and, um, I, um, next order of business is curb cut on five A Arbella Street. Um, we had a sidewalk there at five thirty. Um, Chris and Laura and I attended, um, the, um, the plan is in our, um, packet and the, um, applicant did provide um, two things at the sidewalk. One was a written, um, declaration of the pervious and impervious surface. Um, and the, um, other he had was the um, site plan that showed stormwater structures or, uh, um, which I sent, um, I just put in our packet right before the meeting. Um, so, uh, Laura or Chris, do you want to summarize what we saw? Laura, go ahead.
We saw a, uh, two-family residence that had been previously, I think previously come before, um, the planning board for approval of that two-family residence. So that, that part was already done. Uh, and what we were there to look at was a curb cut request for a second drive serving the two-family residence. And, uh, the driveway, which is in place, is covered in, uh, peystone. So a loose pervious type material. The plan that the applicant provided showed storage, stormwater storage underneath both the existing driveway to the left of the house, as you're looking at it from the street. And to the right of the house, um, stormwater storage chambers, which were there to, uh, help with infiltration. Uh, the applicant states that they are below the required threshold for amount of impervious coverage. And they provided a, um, a site plan and a handwritten letter about that. Uh, Mr. Dan was with us as well. And the planning board members and Mr. Damn had a discussion about how to improve the sidewalks to make them accessible and, um, given that it's a route to school um, and widely used by the community, uh, that the D P W is planning to repave in the spring, including repaving the sidewalks. And that the alignment of the current sidewalk will be adjusted so that it actually, it doesn't show in this plan. We don't have the context of the school, but the sidewalk is going to be moved, uh, further out into the street. New curbs, asphalt curbs constructed. Uh, and we requested assurance from the D P W that the, um, aprons of the driveway and the sidewalk, uh, itself would all have the proper pitch to be ADA compliant. So in other words, no steep cross pitches where driveway apens are crossing. That was our primary concern to make sure that the additional curb cut um, did not negatively impact access. And it sounds from D P W like those access improvements and pavement improvements will be completed in the spring. So we did not have any further questions for the applicants. Chris, anything on it?
Just a, the, uh, lot coverage is forty-six percent and this new area here is pervious. And the, um, there's a storm water catchment here and here and in the, I took a photo of that plan. And it's in your own packet. So, um, Christina?
Thanks, Sarah. Um, I just want to back up a second and, um, express my concern, ongoing concern about um, how these curb cuts are the last things for the construction progress. Um, and when you take a look at the application, um, I would like some clarification, who on town staff, planning board, who looked at this? I mean, the application is complete. This is actually in the Water Resource Overlay Protection District. So the impervious is a little bit different, which is not filled in. And based on that, I said, I'm not, I'm not really comfortable with, you know, a day of handwritten application from the applicant, which is great that we have it today, but, um, it should be on the plan as part of the application. And, um, is this a two-family per se or is this approved A D U? Could you someone clarify that? I thought it was an A D U. Thank you.
It's an A D U.
Okay, so, um, just in going forward, I would just like to keep this in the back of our minds when we talk maybe further about, um, zoning things not appropriate at this moment, but um, I am very concerned. This is the second in, you know, a few months that we've looked at a driveway and a curb cut that's already completed after the fact. Do you think we need to, um, get some procedures in place that this happens way before construction is over? And I did recognize, um, I know we all don't agree on this, but the bylaw does still require that there is some kind of a turnaround. And there is a utility pole that is not depicted on the plan. So those are my comments. Thank you.
A what that's not represented on the plan? I'm sorry, I missed the last part of your comment, Christina.
My internet is terrible tonight. I'm sorry, uh, utility pole.
Okay.
So it, to me, it's gonna be difficult to get around that pole and then to. What's up?
The utility poles are shown right here, right here, and right here, I think. This is the utility pole right there. It says by the word up.
Okay, all right, thanks. Um, I just feel like if you're, it's a one-way, so you're gonna have to pull into that. Is there enough radius to get around that and then back out? Um, it is a school district, so I feel like not always backing out with students continually in the area is a concern. That is still a rule. I know many people don't believe it or agree with it, but that is still part of our bylaws, and I think it's an important one.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mary, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. Yes, I could, sorry, I couldn't be at site visit at school pickup time at that time. So I do, did not have access to what the impervious is. You said it was forty-six percent. Is that, um, and what's the district, fifty percent?
I believe so.
Okay, um, and is there engineered drawings for the water infiltration systems or you, or you just discuss drainage from the driveway?
There is a, um, there, there is a plan for infiltration. So I can pull that up. Go ahead, Laura.
The only thing I have the plan, if you'd like me to pull it up, didn't mean to interrupt you, Mary.
So that because it's in the overlay
Sorry, we missed, didn't, we were not able to hear you.
Yeah, so with, if it's in the Water Resource Protection Overlay District, it's that threshold of 2,500 square feet or 15%. So I was just looking for what those calculations are. I would voice my concerns with the location of the drive and the telephone pole and also the width of the driveway. Since there are already is another driveway on the property, I'm not sure how much driveway that takes up on that that particular sidewalk. And also concerned about the turnaround area as well.
Okay. This is going to be hard to see.
Sarah, would you like me to share? And I've got it up on another screen here.
I, okay, yeah, oops, I gotta make you. Sorry, I have to stop share.
I think, can you all see it?
Yeah, thank you. So can you just point out, Laura?
Yes, let's see if you can see my cursor, just one moment. Okay. Here's Arbella Street. This is the existing driveway, the existing dwelling. The addition to the dwellings approximately here and the chambers infiltrators, stormwater chambers below grade are shown here on the plan and here. So we could not observe those. We we are looking at them from the plan and the statement that they've been installed. This is a section of what the chambers typically look like.
So can I ask, is that a? I mean it. Is that, okay. It's hard for me to tell. Is this in the folder?
I just put it, a photo of it. You pulled up the photo that I put in the folder.
I, I pulled up what you put in the folder tonight.
Yeah, I put it in at 6:10. It was a photo of what he had. This is the plan, I believe, that was used for the A and R, I'm not the A and R, the ADU. I presume. So can you stop right there for the lot coverage by structure? Lot covered by structure and impervious is 46%. So it is shown on that plan. Okay, great. Thank you, Laura. Any other comments?
I would, I would note, Sarah, that the driveway that they have built does not have access to the street. The driveway, the sidewalk is still blocking vehicular access. And the driveway that's there is pervious. It's peystone, so it's not adding to the impervious surface.
Is Paul, are you, can you? You know, the plan that Laura just showed, which presumably was the plan for the building permit and the I presume, and the A and R application does not show this driveway that we're now asked sort of after the fact to look at. So the sequence here was they got, can you give us the sequence of events here so that we just more as background? Not really dreaming.
Yes, they got a building permit to convert the building to a two-family. And that was based on the plan that I think was shown with the drainage calculations previously. And that plan was approved by the planning board as well as the zoning board of appeals and myself. I have not seen any plan of the new driveway until this very meeting right now. So I, I, this is my first time being aware of that.
So one of the dilemmas here is they've installed this, in this case, and a pervious. Looks like they may have taken down a tree. I don't recall if the tree was there still or not, but I think it's not. So they've changed the site work from what the approved plan is. And so, and they're adding a second curb cut to the site. So I think those are the facts. So there's not a, there's not a, Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, there's not a permit required for them to dug up whatever was there and probably after construction, it was a mast, right? And then put down gravel for a then come to us for access request.
That's correct. That kind of work does not require a permit from my office.
Okay. The, there is not actually a cut in the curb, in the curb yet, although, you know, probably many cars could go over it. It's it's not an official curb cut, right? You know, the sidewalk remains. Somebody made that point. Okay. Any other comments or questions? Mary?
Yeah, my comment is, I mean, I'd like to be able to review the full application and then up until, I guess, either the site visit or six o'clock, we didn't have all the information. So I'm, I'm just not comfortable reviewing this application that we didn't have the full application. And I would like to talk about a couple of the safety issues with the not being able to turn around and it being on a school walking route and and the width of the driveway and the telephone pole. But I guess all in all and not having the numbers and wanting to look at the Water Resource Protection District numbers and if it's meeting that threshold and the drainage is proper, I'm just uncomfortable kind of reviewing it at this point, but when we didn't have the full application.
I think that they're not adding any impervious surface at this point. So in, if, if we were to approve this curb cut, in my opinion, we would approve it with the caveat that it remains impervious. Chris, you look like you were saying something.
Yeah, that it remains pervious, not impervious.
All right, thank you. Okay, so Mary's making a sort of a suggestion that we defer till next meeting. We did actually have the sidewalk sooner than we often do, so that seems like a reasonable thing unless somebody wants to make a motion, we can take this up. I would like to suggest that if we take it up in our next meeting, that we all have at least gone and looked at it and looked at the materials so that we can act on it quickly. Does that, does that make sense for folks? So we defer to next meeting on this one and take it up right at the start of the meeting and give people a chance to look at it, but or does somebody want to make a motion?
There, I'm sorry, trying to find my, trying to find my hand. Could we get the application complete and the engineer just from the owner? Please.
Okay, I didn't hear that. I'm sorry. You'd want the engineer to appear at the next meeting? The calculations are in the folder now, but just, just there on.
I just wanted the calculations on the plan and the application to be complete. So I think we should check off that it's in the Water Resource Protection District and the plan should have the calculations on them.
The curb cut plan. Is that a requirement of the curb cut plan?
Correct.
Okay. So can you convey that to them and?
I believe Gail is doing all of the communications once an application has been started. So I just think it should, we should be consistent. She's had all the communications with the applicant.
Okay, so we're going to take, we'll defer this till the, till next meeting, but we'll try to move it through next meeting quickly. Unless there are significant other issues. So we're going to pass over that action on that for tonight. Okay, we have a common driveway opinion 216 Summer Street. Who's here for Miranda?
Yes.
Glofski and yes, do you need to share your screen or do you want?
I would.
To share.
Good evening. I'd be happy to share if.
Oh, I can't, I don't want to make somebody not on the board host. I'm sorry, let me pull it up. Common driveway.
It looks like it will allow me to share. Is that?
Oh, I think I just didn't. I'm just. Huh, it's weird. Okay.
That looks great. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name is Miranda Samasco. I'm an attorney at Glofski and Glofski. And I, my colleague Mark Glofski has appeared before the board, most recently on this application on behalf of the Karis Summer Street Nominee Trust. I just want to say that Jason Karis, I believe, is on the line as well as the project engineer Charlie Ware from Hancock Associates. So we have before you a request that follows a previously endorsed A and R lot, creating two lots at 208 Summer Street. You have an application and this common driveway plan, which demonstrates that the driveway has been designed in accordance with the standards of the bylaw under section 6.4. The notes actually call out compliance and I'll just run through them quickly. The driveway is 18 feet wide. It is less than 500 feet long. It's actual 428 feet. The slope of the driveway is not greater than 10%. And it also meets the required gradual slope at the intersection of the street of being less than 1% for the first 20 feet. And for the next 30 feet, the slope is not greater than 5% and I believe it's actually 3%. So all of that has been called out on the plan. I believe that you should also have received correspondence from the building inspector, Paul Orlando. That was provided via email confirming that he had reviewed this plan and determined that it that the driveway complies with the standards of 6.4. And that in his view, the driveway provides adequate frontage in accordance with section 5.1 of the bylaw. So I believe so long as the board is also satisfied of those requirements, that we would request approval of the common driveway plan.
And Sue, those reflect the new numbering?
I did, I am not, I do not know if the numbering that you're requiring is the the, the new renumbering, I can check them. I haven't checked it against that.
Miranda, do you know, or did you confirm that this is the, the November 21st dimensional requirements?
I'm sorry, oh, under the bylaw, the renumbering under the bylaw?
Yeah.
Yes, I did. I did. It's section 6.4 under the new bylaw.
Okay, great. Always check now. Think so.
I'm sorry, 8.4, I misspoke.
It's 6.4s. Yes, okay, 8.4. Okay, questions from the board, Mary?
Yeah, I had some questions and then some comments. I guess my first question would be that I don't think we can make or, or, you know, okay, this common driveway, we just have that we're getting an opinion tonight on the agenda. So that's my first point. My second, okay, a few questions. Yeah, so how many feet is this? Is this driveway from the neighboring driveway to the right? I couldn't tell on the drawing. So for the
This here?
On Summer Street, do you mean? Is there?
Yes, this is going to Summer Street, correct?
Yes, I'm just trying to, do you mean the McDougal property? What, which driveway are you referring to?
Yes.
Where, can you see my cursor? Is this?
Yeah, it's likely, but Charlie Ware with Hancock Associates, just based, it's not on this plan, but it's probably about 150 feet.
150, okay.
Plus or minus.
Okay, yeah, because the reason I ask is I think the, I think with 127 being, I think classified as a state highway, there's certain requirements for how many feet a driveway can be from each other. I guess my other question, I guess maybe to town staff is, is do we know how many common driveways we have off of 127? If any. And then to approve this type of common driveway, I would like some sort of opinion from our fire department, police department, highway department, CONCOM, town engineer, perhaps we do our own peer review engineer. I didn't see drainage calculations or if there was going to be gravel on the sides of the driveway for the shoulder. You know, sight lines. I think we would have to do a site visit. Any sort of easement issues on between these two properties? So those are some of my thoughts and questions.
May I just respond, Madam Chair, to a couple of those, please?
Sure.
So the, the call out of the opinion on the agenda actually is tracking the, the language in the bylaw itself in section 5.1. So I don't see that there's any notice requirement and this is consistent absolutely with the board's past practice. In terms of the curb cut, I would just remind the board that this is an existing curb cut. So we are not creating a new curb cut in Summer Street. The driveway is being constructed anew. But the application took pains to use the existing curb cut to avoid some of the issues that members have called out. And in terms of the additional engineering for the common driveway. I would just observe that it hasn't been the board's practice to request those types of materials. They, I have seen those requested in connection with curb cut applications. And there's very specific information in the bylaw that is required as part of those applications. And Charlie, I don't know, I guess lastly, I would observe that this is also subject to Conservation Commission review. And Charlie Ware can fill you in on, on his proceedings, his meetings with the Conservation Commission today.
Okay, Charlie, you want to fill us in on that?
Yeah, not a lot to say. We've, the plans that you see before you are, although there are more detailed plans than this, but those plans are currently before the commission. We've been through the first hearing and we're going to respond to some of the the conservation's comments and we'll probably be back in front of them. Perhaps at the next hearing, but it is certainly the hearing after that.
And then just to, for the board, I'm looking at section eight point four common driveways and I'm gonna just read a couple of sections here, just without comment about the prior discussion, but frontage along the length of any way in existence when some control law became effective shall in no way be used as frontage as specified by the zoning by law unless the way needs following minimum standards. Furthermore, no common driveway shall be accepted as a public road north of the town, under any circumstances be held liable for construction, reconstruction, maintenance and so forth. Common driveways will be built in accordance with the following standards, minimum driveway width sixteen feet, eighteen feet if over a hundred feet in length, I believe the applicant has shown that. Maximum driveway grade of ten percent, maximum driveway length of five hundred feet. And the common driveway at its intersection with a street must provide a leveling off of the slope with no more than one percent for the first twenty feet. And slope no greater than five percent for the next thirty feet. These standards may be waived in the opinion of planning board where such actions in the public interest are not inconsistent with the purpose of the bylaw. So it does not ask us to have input from other boards or do calculations. Christina?
Thanks, so I was just gonna say maybe this opinion is a bit premature, maybe we should wait for the CONCOM, I know you just said that it's not in our purview, but it just seems opinion may be a bit premature.
So the CONCOM section, just, I'm gonna share my screen again here. Are you just, are you, Charlie, can you explain the extent of the CONCOM jurisdiction, is it is it set within the setback or is it actually wetland replication, what's the extent of that?
No, this, we're, we're really out on the edge. If you see, you see the lines with the 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 solid line with the circles in between, the next, the next one over, those are the, that actually, actually while we're at it, that, that's a fifty foot setback from the wetlands.
This is the hundred feet.
That's the hundred foot buffer, so you can see that we're, we are just into the hundred foot buffer. And so the driveway is just barely on the outside of the hundred foot buffer zone. Which puts us in jurisdiction, means that we need to get an order of conditions from the commission, and that is what we're currently pursuing.
So our approval of this is no way, you you can't construct anything until you have an order of conditions, but then
That's correct.
Yeah. Other comments from the board?
Yes, Sarah. There are only two houses served by this common driveway.
That's correct.
Does not seem like it's a major construction project going on in here. So I, I think we should take that into account.
Laura?
My questions were around the wetland buffer zone and the riverfront area and so forth, and I see that the driveway is within the wetland buffer zone, so given that that was my main question that, and that puts it in CONCOM jurisdiction and CONCOM is is going to be visiting that with the applicant, then that that addresses my main concerns, which is protections of the wetland and water resources.
Okay, and a question for you, Mary, are you asserting that we can't act on this tonight because the agenda sits opinion rather than vote? Is that your objection?
I don't have an objection to that, I'm just saying that's, hasn't been common practice that we vote on things that doesn't have a, have a vote next to it. But I had another question as well.
Okay, um, yes, go ahead, Mary.
With the, the, I don't have it, the length of the driveway to the 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 lot line of the last lot and then that driveway, what's the total length of that driveway, so that the common driveway plus the extended driveway? And and with that
To hear.
Yeah, partly why I'm asking is I just, I would feel more comfortable knowing that the police and fire had looked at this area for safety, for turnaround, for being able to access both properties easily. You know, our, our objective is for safety and so we need to think of fire, flood, panic, whatever it may be, that that we have looked at and or asked the experts for their opinion on on this.
I can, do you want me to, Chairman, do you want me to answer some of those questions?
Sure.
It's, it's approximately, it's probably about ninety feet more, it's four hundred twenty-eight feet you know, to the property line, and that's where the common drive ends. It's about ninety feet more to the house from that property line to the house. The other thing that you'll see is that the the driveway which leads to up to the other house is is wide. That's correct, you can see at the at the turn, the reason why that's wide there is we're providing for, you know, emergency vehicle can can make a three-point turn at that location. And that's why we've shown that the way it is.
Sue? Sue Brown?
Thank you, Sarah. Paul, can you help me out here, I'm trying to find the proper place where this is why it's a decision, I know why it's a decision, my understanding is that a common driveway does not need to be approved or permitted by the planning board, rather it, the planning board is asked just for an opinion that it agrees with the findings of the building inspector that the drive is adequate. Paul, can you confirm that language and where I can find it, because I'm having trouble.
Yeah, hi Sue, I believe that language is under section five point four of the zoning by law.
Okay.
Me, so if you see it, correct me if I'm wrong.
I I think it's actually five point one.
Okay, that, yeah, that sounds right, I'm sorry about that.
That's okay, I'm, I've tried it, we've moved things around.
Yeah, I have it here.
Yes, there it is, thank you.
Here it is, so just so everybody understands, in issuing building permits for construction on lots with frontage considered by the building inspector to provide impractical vehicular access or otherwise satisfying only technical and not practical frontage compliance, the building inspector shall be empowered to ensure that all lots have access to that portion of the lot to be constructed upon by means of an easement or so-called common driveway, which are in his opinion and in the opinion of the planning board, of adequate construction to provide for the needs of vehicular traffic in relation to the proposed use of land and for the installation of municipal services to serve such land and buildings. And so forth. So that's the issue, is we're gonna issue an opinion, thank you, Sue. Sorry.
Paul, do you, do you think this is an adequate driveway?
Yes, sir, based on the plan that was submitted, I do think it is, it meets the requirements of the bylaw. And I think I did submit an email to the applicant that was probably copied to the planning board on that.
Thank you.
Um, I'd like to see us might move this night, it seems to me that they've met the requirements in the bylaw, and I wanted to just say on the issue of fire and so forth, I believe that the, at least in my mind, the reason we have a length width and grade requirements for a common driveway is that those are what has been determined to provide that safety and that each one if, in this case, they meet all of the requirements and therefore the, you know, they meet those, sort of that baseline, which is by definition, what we have previous, the town has previously decided is is the safe and appropriate common driveway requirements. So it's, it's like the minimum requirements to meet safety, so that's my opinion, um, so it seems to me we can offer opinion tonight, but yep, I
I guess, back to my point before about the CONCOM, so if this changes, that's my only concern, if CONCOM says this is not what we are going to approve, I am just concerned that we're approving this and it might, we need, might need to come back twice, so I think it's okay as is, but my concern is that CONCOM in any way changes it, then they're gonna have to come back again, so if it just makes sense to wait, I just think it's premature at this point, so if CONCOM says yes, I, I say yes, but I don't want to, yes, and then contradict what CONCOM says, that's my only concern, thanks.
Think we're contradicting them because they couldn't construct it without CONCOM. But I think you're make a point that in the, in the event to accommodate CONCOM, there needed to be a dramatic change to the layout, then obviously would have to come back to us.
Correct.
Okay, I'm Laura.
Yeah, a question about the driveway to proposed dwelling on lot one and the fact that the driveway is located within the forty-foot rear setback, almost, almost half of it is located after you depart from the common drive. Is there a reason why that was necessary, I'm guessing it's to do with the grading, but perhaps Mr. Ware could speak to that? And were there other alternatives?
Is, would it be possible, yeah, we could put that point. Yeah, the, the reason for that was the, the topography on the site is very steep from the wetlands up to where the, where the house is. And the only way to do that was to, was to was to provide for placing the driveway at the the highest point we could on the common drive and then getting up to the house from there. So it had to do with the topography of the site, that's correct.
But setback requirements, Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, are related to buildings, not
Structures, right, yeah, I just, that was the question I was looking for too.
That's the question?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, the, the setback is relation to the parking area required, where the actual vehicles are parked requires a five-foot setback. But not the driveway, the, the way itself that access that area.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great, are we ready to, I know Christina would rather wait, but I, I it's my opinion that we can move an opinion on this tonight, would anybody like to make a motion or do you want to differ?
I'd like to make a motion.
What's your motion?
My motion is that we concur with the opinion of the building inspector that the proposed common driveway is adequate for the purposes of serving these two houses in compliance with the plan, I don't have the the details, but we can have those.
And can I add that? I mean, if the plan is changed based on orders, an order of conditions that it will be revisited.
Of course.
Thanks, Sarah.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, and Gail, it's the common driveway exhibit plan C dash one dated August sixteenth for by Hancock Associates prepared for the Charis, Charis Summer Street Nominee Trust care of Lisa Brackowitz. Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a, I believe a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Chris?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Uh, Mary?
Yeah, so I'll just say with the caveat, if, if the enforcement officer says that there's no safety concerns, then I will concur with that.
Okay, great. Um, Paul, as a courtesy, would you mind just, um you know, when you, when you're talking to the police and fire, just, just run that by them and make sure that they don't have any concerns? Christina?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Gary still on, I know he's sick. Gary, you still here, no, I don't see him. Uh, and the chair votes, yes. Thank you. Great, thank you, Charlie and Miranda.
Thank you.
Good night.
Sarah, may I ask a question while we have Paul on?
Yes, certainly.
Who that Paul, do you then oh, I'm not finding words, do you, who then does the like sign off on the common driveway, is it, who inspects it at the end, is it you, is it DPW, is it, who does that?
I'm not sure what the question is. If you think that you would like to have an as-built plan by the engineer, you could certainly condition that as part of your approval.
Well, I was just asking a general question, who enforces this particular bylaw? So I would think any bylaw we have, somebody enforces it, and so I'm just wondering what, what
Well, I think if somebody thinks there's a violation of the bylaw, they could bring that to my attention and we can look at that. Are you asking if I have surveying equipment and can go up to the site and and verify that, because the answer to that is that I'm not a surveyor, I don't have that equipment.
Um, and we don't have to take up time now, but I'm just asking in general, who in town, yeah, like make sure that it's the same, it's eighteen feet, it's eighteen feet and it doesn't go into the wetlands or it has proper drainage or, you know, yeah, I'm just wondering who does, maybe nobody, I'm just asking.
In this case, with the wetlands being the, the, the conservation agent would, it so happens, but if this was all upland, then your question might be
Can, can I?
Laura, go ahead.
So it's in the CONCOM jurisdiction, so typically with a notice of conditions, it's going to require an as-built plan. But even if it didn't, anytime an engineer or an architect or someone is preparing a plan that is to be that requires a permit and is going to be constructed, that engineer who prepared the plan has to stamp and sign an affidavit at the end of the at the end of the project, when the building inspector is ready to sign off saying that they verified the plan is built according to, you know, conforms with drawings and specifications. So that is just part of the typical professional process. If that helps answer your question, Mary.
Yeah, thank you, Laura. Can I jump in, can we just start to request that so we can close the loop on this file, I think that's a great suggestion that our building inspector added.
Let me ask, Paul, do you tip, would you get the stamped plan for your records if this were being complete? Even having them do it and give it, they could also just do it and give it to the owner, right, unless it's required to be filed, CONCOM assigned. If this was just upland, would you get a stamped plan at the end of this driveway? An as-built?
Yeah, I mean, I suppose it's something we could do.
But would you ordinarily at this point?
For, for just a common driveway?
Where to serve two homes?
Yeah.
Maybe not. I mean, a lot of it is, is visual things that you could go and, if something looks out of the ordinary, I would request it.
Okay, so to answer Mary's question, you, you're going out that road, that driveway to look at the, the house, houses that are being built, and if you look, if you're driving down the road and it looks like it's eight feet wide, impossible, you might flag it or obvious things, whether it's exactly ten percent or eight percent or ten, eleven percent, you would not be able to determine, obviously. Okay, great, all right, we have a lot of other
Can I ask a question then? So I just think in general, the inspector, is the truth that you don't you don't inspect driveways, so I think it might be important for the built planning board to ask for this as-built, just for our record going forward, because I don't think this is in normal duties of the building inspector, so I think we should have a file that closes the loop on this, so I would like to add this, I don't know if I need to make amendment, we voted, I would like a as-built, this file.
Can I make a comment in response? So the affidavit, the affidavit that the engineer provides with a stamped plan at the end is not the same as an as-built, and as-built is a surveyor coming back out again to the property after construction And as-built is a surveyor coming back out again to the property after construction is complete and surveying the property. And then the surveyor stamping that plan and saying, this is the as-built plan and Concom requires that, but that's not a, um, that's not a requirement of, um, typical process here. That's an extra expense to the applicant um, to provide an as-built plan. And it's typically requested through Concom, no, no order of conditions, but not for, um, other, you know, not a typical sort of driveway being built. I think Sue was gonna, I, I may have misspoken and Sue, please correct me if I said something wrong.
No, I wasn't going to, um, correct you.
So, um, I think that it's a good question about how do we, um, how, how do we ensure that, you know, the zoning is being followed across many different topics, but probably more than we can take up for tonight? Um, I would, we're, you know, we're about to talk about zoning changes. And maybe one of the things, uh, that somebody's interested in this would be helpful is to find out how other towns do it, what kind of requirements they have for these, these kinds of things and then report back. Um, and where we could take it, you know, our list of things that we might add to zoning in our future. Cause I, and I actually have a list, so I will add this one as a possible uh, amendment to future. I don't think we can do it in this round because we haven't had a hearing on it, but nonetheless, um, it seems like it's of interest to a couple of members. We could add it to the list of possible zoning additions in the future. Um, so with that, I think, um, any other questions for Paul tonight? I think we're about to talk about um, zoning, uh, process in the upcoming town meeting. So, um, I'm going to thank Paul for his time tonight.
Thank you, Sarah.
Get your input on all these, um, fascinating topics.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Okay, thank you. Great, um, so the last substantive topic on our agenda is the, um, is to open the continued public hearing for just our discussion regarding the zoning changes. So I'm doing that. Um, I'll take a roll call vote to open the continued public hearing for planning board discussion. Um, Chris?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Um, what sort of I got? Christina, is she still on? Yes. Christina? Christina, uh, can I get your?
Sorry, if you can hear me, yes, it's so bad.
Okay, thank you. Um, and I vote yes. Um, while I'm thinking about it, one, well, no, let's come back to that. Um, great. Um, so just by way of update, a couple of things. Um, today, uh, Chris and I met with Sarah Melish, um, and got her feedback. Remember she had, um, indicated a number of things during the public hearings. So we sat down with her and she had a couple of, I would say fairly technical, she caught a really good typo, a really important typo, um, which was good. And, um, she had a couple of good ideas based on her, um, their experience with the zoning board of appeals. Um, but I would say nothing major, uh, with, except perhaps when we talked about accessory dwelling units. Um, and so we will synthesize that in the process we're gonna lay out in a minute and then come back to you to say, here's what we've recommend based on Sarah's input. Um, in this process, I'm gonna explain in a minute. We also got, um, Anne Harrison went through all of the zoning and gave us, um, comments and, uh, she also caught some typos, although, um, Anne, you had the raw, you had the slightly older version, but, um, we'll definitely check all those and some, uh, a couple of things that also I think are, um, things that we hadn't thought about. So again, we'll use the same process to propose a couple of changes. The other thing that we, uh, confirmed with Sarah Melish is that the FINCOM in May voted that the substance of these zoning changes were not, um, did not have financial impact and thus they, um, would be taking no action on them. So there's no, uh, that's good. And, um, Sarah also, um, will point out to her board, um, the point, we're gonna give her just a memo to the, uh, just an email to the, her board saying, go look at them, they're on the website and specifically pointing them to the non-conforming use section as written and inviting them to, um, give us any comments they might have. So that's the update. Um, Chris, any other update on meetings or, uh, input on the zoning changes? Okay, um, also, uh, the website had some updates with renaming the files. So it's very much clearer. They now just say article two, article three, article four. They've got actual names and, um, so they're just general cleanup on that, um, that's not substantive. And then, um, in your, uh, packet, um, a couple of things. Oh, we propose a work plan, um, pull it up here. Um, for, uh, at the last meeting, um, we talked about the fact that November fourteenth is coming quickly. Um, I'd like, hard to believe that's the case. Um, and what are the steps to, um, get to that point? This is in, uh, so just to make sure everybody knows, I gave you guys an email and the memo is in the packet and it points to a new directory in our, um, files called November twenty-two town meeting. It's got, I just took only the things that we're gonna work on between now and November twenty, the November town meeting and put them in that folder. And I put things in there that are gonna go beyond just this meeting or next meeting or the week after. So here's the proposed work plan that we wanted to just bring to you tonight to, um, discuss, um, we're gonna talk about the table and the cricket article in a minute. Um, but this is the, the weeks between now and, can everybody see that? Is that big enough?
Can you make it bigger, please?
Yeah. There we go. Okay, hopefully it's better. Um, this is the proposed, this, uh, proposed work plan. Um, so here we are, September twelfth, November fourteenth is the, the end game. Um, and I was trying to say to all of us, gosh, that here's what we need to do as homework. Um, there'll probably be some more things here so that we can understand that, that there's quite a bit of homework to make our meetings productive. Um, so we, um, been invited to go next Monday to the select board meeting just to give them an update on particularly the public communications is what they're interested in hearing, um, as well as to ask them for their support on the zoning changes. And then, um, I think Christina mentioned this last time that we're gonna need to have some workshops. And given that we have a lot of things on a regular meeting agenda, Ron and I thought that it would make sense to have, um, meet weekly for just basically, uh, a couple of weeks. Um, and then meet on Tuesday, September twentieth as a workshop. I call it workshop, working session, but it will obviously be a public meeting. Um, September twenty-sixth is a regular meeting, the third is a workshop. Um, and we have a regular meeting on Tuesday, October eleventh. And then a community open house, which we had talked about. And then a last workshop on, this is a Monday. And that's because that's when the warrant closes. If we had a last change that we needed to make, um, that's when the selectmen, select board are going to, uh, finalize the warrant. So, um, that's the proposed dates. Um, I know it's, it's a busy fall, but I think if we work through things, um, and do our homework, we can get through it. So, um, our proposal is next, uh, Tuesday that we will, um, begin to, um, finalize the first half of the articles. And I'm gonna show you in a minute how we propose to do that. Um, and then we have some critical, critic, cricket articles, a table for the website. Um, on September twenty-sixth, we'll talk about the, I called it open house. It should be called, yeah, an open house. Um, and then there's a postcard, um, that we'll see on the twenty-sixth that will finalize. Sue has been working on doing a postal customer drop this week. And also we need to send final versions to town council in there. So, um, those are the big things. I'm sure the other little things will come up. Um, comments or, uh, questions on the work plan? Um, Christina?
Um, yes, I guess first of all, just big picture. Um, I thank you for the Tuesday. I'm really not comfortable with scheduling any meetings that conflict with the board of selectmen. So I would appreciate just moving those to Tuesdays if that work with people's schedules. I think we talked about last time that, I mean, although you and Chris did a lot for the last spring town meeting, that wasn't going to be the same going forward for the fall. I feel like we've put ourselves in a time crunch again and it seems natural that you and Chris would take over, but I feel like we may have kind of missed the boat on some of this. I thought the last meeting we talked about, are we going to bring all these things to town meeting? Are they just gonna be, you know, the housekeeping and not the ADUs and not the, and we haven't had that conversation yet. So this work plan to me seems a bit premature because I'm not comfortable with probably at least fifty percent, if not more, of the things that we're bringing forward because we haven't done, I mean, to me, what the people that have written to us have asked us to do. So housekeeping, maybe, okay, but the rest of it, I'm not okay with. And I feel like we're kind of pushing this at the same speed that we were at in the spring. Um, those are my concerns and I feel like it's you and Chris again where it's, you had a meeting with Sarah, you had, I mean, this is the first, I mean, two days ago was the first I've heard a conversation about meeting with the board of selectmen. The board of selectmen and other people are hearing about this meeting before the planning board, which is a bit concerning. So I think there's a lot of things going on behind the scenes, which the entire board doesn't know about, is privy to. So I am very concerned about that.
So I think, um, happy, I think what I had sent you the work plan, you had asked questions about the work plan about three weeks ago and asked for input on it and what you think you wanted to see on it. So happy to.
I think some of these things should be in public. I think they need to be in an open meeting, not behind the scenes and not emails. I think the public needs to hear this.
So, um, okay, that's your opinion. Uh, we're, we're not doing anything behind the scenes, except you want to draft a cricket article from a blank screen in a public meeting? Is that what you're?
No, I want to have a conversation in public about what warrant articles. I thought at the last meeting, we agreed that potentially all these articles were not going to go forward at the fall. That conversation has not happened. That's what's concerning to me. I thought we had maybe agreed as a talking point that we would talk about not bringing all of them, the controversial ones. So to me, that conversation is lacking.
No, I, I agree with you. We have a vote for, to bring all eleven articles forward. And certainly a motion to table any of those articles is, um, among the, uh, among the things that any of our members could put forward, in my opinion. We certainly could entertain a motion to table any of these articles. Um, and that, but at this point, we voted, uh, a majority voted to move all of them forward. So we have to amend that vote or, uh, revote it. And so, yes, if you don't.
I think, I agree.
So if you don't want to have, uh, any of these topics, adult entertainment, go forward to town meeting, then you would make a motion when it, when we're talking about that article. I think that's the, that's what I envision.
I think we need to have a conversation instead of.
That's what I envision happening is that we would have a discussion about each article. We might make potentially some modifications to it, but I'm pretty not. And certainly when we have a discussion about that article, any member could raise a modification of our vote to move it to town meeting. Absolutely. So you're right that we, we can have that conversation, but it's gotta be by vote of the, the planning board. And right now, we have a vote of the planning board to move eleven articles to town meeting. So.
And we had a lot of pushback about all those meetings and that's why we're delaying. So yes, we can still go forward and I think we're gonna still end up where we did. So I think we need to listen to the pulse of the public. Um, so when is that going to happen? I don't see that on the work, is my concern.
I'm sorry, what do you want to see on the work plan?
When, when are we gonna talk about that?
I'm sorry, I'm not, I didn't hear what you said you wanted to.
On the nineteenth with the board of selectmen? Sorry, when, when is that conversation happening on this work plan?
So, not tonight. I'm sorry, you're breaking up. So the, what is the this that you want to see on the work plan?
Sarah, I think I know what she's trying to say if I may. I think she's saying where on the work plan are each of the conversations. So I see finalized articles one through five um, next week, for example, Christina. Where are the other articles that say we're approving? Um, yeah, so I think they're in there. So I think Christina, the answer to your question is um, the conversations of whether to move them forward would happen on the dates where it says finalized articles.
Yes, thank you. Um, Mary, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I would like to see on this work plan, um, we have had input from residents wanting to see more data and impact studies to, um, back up why we're doing certain things and that we've, we've kind of analyzed, um, and felt comfortable to bring these forward. And to date, we have not done that. So I would like to see where that's gonna fit in on this, this tight schedule and this work plan. Um, and I did not receive any email about the select board inviting us on the nineteenth. I know a select board member told the select board that the planning board was meeting, um, with them on the nineteenth. So I'm just kind of trying to understand where that came about and what exactly is occurring at that meeting and kind of, um, why it was decided for the nineteenth. And I keep getting conflicting stories. So I'm just trying to understand, I guess, how that came about and the purpose of it. But I, I would like for us as a planning board to step back a little bit and try to provide more data. I understand there's been work on the website, but I think we're just kind of, um, reorganizing data that's already been out there. And so I'd like to see some new data out there for residents.
So, um, if I, I think that the issue, we've talked about this before, the issue about data for, um, so accessory dwelling units, for example, certainly you have asked for data, but I think we haven't agreed as a board that that's a direction that we want to take. And I think we can take that up in each of these article discussions. So if there's specific data requirements, I want to know X. We've already talked about the fact we, it's hard to know how many accessory dwelling units we have. We've, we've kind of have, we've, we haven't discovered a process for figuring that out, for example. But, um, if there's specific data that we need to have and we vote to pursue it, whether it's through a consultant or through Sue or some other person, then, then we move ahead. But just one of us or several of us saying that they want certain data is not an agreement by the board.
So would you like us to say what those data points are when we discuss each article?
Yeah, or in advance of it. Yeah.
And will that give us the time, um, if the board were to vote to do the due diligence, will that give us the time to obtain that information?
I think we have to have an agreement that we're gonna spend time, maybe to let, maybe, um, that it would, that would materially change the, the zoning article. So, and by vote of the board. We've got a vote to move these forward. So to, to your point, Mary, I think it's a perfectly fine thing to say, I would like to see us table article, whatever, adult entertainment until we have data on X. And then the board votes yay or nay on that to, uh, to move that forward. It seems to me that that's the best way to do it. Yeah.
And I don't think you can see, um, Kathy by law, I had her hand up.
Yeah, I was gonna come back to the board of selectmen, select boards, meeting in a minute.
Okay.
Yep, Kathy will, um. So I, I'm happy to have another, um, proposal of how we move forward. But I'm not hearing one except to say, um, uh, so the proposal, um, that Chris and I, sorry, um, we're, I haven't heard, I'm happy to have people say, here's an idea, but I haven't heard anything. And I'm happy, I'm open to that. So the, the proposal, all the zoning articles are on the website. Now, they're all on the website. They're on our, um, they're on the website. They are on that, no, as my memo of last week indicates, they are on the November twenty-second town meeting. Oops, it's still sharing, sorry. Uh, I think if I stop sharing. I think if I stop sharing and then I go to the. Unfortunately, with Zoom, you have to keep sharing and unsharing, so they are on this folder. So this is, as my memo indicated, the zoning articles for review are PDFs, I believe. Of where we were. Actually, I guess they're dogs. Where we were when we, this is the ones for us to review, I'll come back to that in a second. This is the, from June. So that's the static. Final motions that we took. So they're both the docs and the PDFs. Okay, so that's just the static set of. Zoning articles from June, can you see this? I don't know how to make that bigger, sorry. And then we have zoning articles for review. And then we have a communications folder. The proposal that I'd like to suggest is that for each of these zoning articles that we take. Numbers one, two, three, four, five for the next meeting. Maybe six, just because seven, eight, nine or more and ten, eleven are a little bit more contentious. So let's take one through six numbered here, I renamed them slightly just to make them. A little easier to see and that we've, I'm proposing.
Just a point of clarification, I'm sorry, are you talking about a section one through six or article one through?
Article one through six.
Article one through.
Article one here is, number one is sections one to four. Article two are the general bylaws changes, article three and four are the delete and renumber article, those aren't too contentious. Article five is section twelve, article six is section six, special permits. Article seven is section seven, non-conforming use, article eight is adult entertainment, nine is residential conservation cluster. Ten is senior housing and eleven is ADUs. Okay, that's my new, hopefully that's clear. And then my suggestion, I don't know, if somebody has a good idea about how to do it. I'm happy to hear it, here's my suggestion. And we'll be patient with me here for a second. Maybe this will be just so confusing, I hope not. I just cut something from the web here, let me make this bigger. So this. This, this is cut from the web. What I suggest is that we all work in that single document. You can have version control, you can have, and that we use track changes for administrative typos. So here Massachusetts is typed wrong, so we just fix it. So everybody can see it. No adding language or anything in red, just track changes if anybody doesn't know how to use that tool. Be happy to, you know, Wellesley in this case here. My laser doesn't work. Is added an L, so it seems to me to be on. Just administrative. And then when we want to make a motion to change something, that we use a comment. So in this case, my motion will be to change Bates, the word Bates, to Catherine, Kathleen Smith. Then we can actually go through them and see, hopefully, some of them will be. Obvious and agreed and others than that we can discuss. Similarly, down here Bates wrote in her lady, in her diary and I, my motion would be Kathleen Smith made a movie. And that we would change Wyoming would be a correction because it was Wyoming, not Colorado. So, I don't know if that works, if we, if that's too convoluted, happy to take suggestions about how we would. Make changes, suggested changes, motions to the articles. We can go by line number, we can do whatever you want. So that's. So there were a couple of things we're talking about here, we'll get back to the select board in a minute, I haven't forgotten. So in terms of just process. Christina.
So for me, I would like to go the opposite direction. I think we need to get the contentious things out of the way first. I think we need to know ASAP what we're dealing with so we all can prepare. Waiting until October thirtieth, a month before town meeting, to know what we're up against. And a week before a community hearing or a community get together is, is not enough time. So to me, I would like that switched, I think we should have a quick, you know, poll, which one are we going forward? Yes, we voted on all these, but before we heard from the Board of Selectmen, before we heard from the public. And in my opinion, we've done nothing since we heard from the public and the Board of Selectmen to. Educate the public more, I don't really feel like we've done too much. So I don't think we're in any different of a situation than we were in June. So that's my concern and I think we.
Sorry.
So if you and Chris have done something, that's great, but the board has not. Spoken.
Okay, I think you make an excellent suggestion to flip. Article six through eleven first and then articles one through five. I think that, I, I agree with that a hundred percent, I think that's a great suggestion. So, I don't have any problem with that. And since I'm the one, only one, it's not like it's a consensus document here, so I think that's a really good suggestion.
A, a board's consensus before we go to the Board of Selectmen. I feel like next Monday might be a bit premature. I feel like we as a board maybe should have an idea of what we're going to go forward with before we meet with the Board of Selectmen. Or Select Board, I'm sorry. And I feel like some of these conversations, like I said before, are happening somewhere, but.
I think, what's, I think. Kathy can help clarify the, her expectations for the select board meeting. So I'm gonna turn it over to her for that question, but.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, so the purpose of the discussion at next week's Select Board meeting. Is to review the community engagement or communication plan. You all came to the Select Board, I forget if it was May or June, to review the actual articles. Or, you know, we've already seen the articles and if there are substantive changes, certainly you could discuss those. But what we wanted to understand was how you're going to engage the community. We've heard mention of cricket articles and, and, you know, workshops. And we just wanted to see a plan for that community engagement. So unless there are substantive changes to the actual articles that we've already seen. We don't need to review that next week. And to answer the question, why next week? The agenda is prepared by the town administrator, I believe. And Sue, correct me if I'm wrong, Greg said that you had requested. Time on a Select Board agenda to review the community outreach plan, that is my understanding. And please correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes, we have, we, we know the Select Board wanted to review the plan, so I asked Greg what, which, which date would be appropriate.
Right, that, that's all it is, we want to understand how the, how the planning board is going to engage the public in the conversation. That it should be pretty straightforward.
And just to go, we haven't yet talked about that, this, that's this column here.
Right, that looks like what you've got there.
Right, that's, that's that column. So, that was, and then we're gonna talk about that tonight. So, as a board, Mary, a comment or a question?
There's two comments, I think that's a good idea by Christine to kind of flip flop what the, you know. Process or the, I mean, the sequence is. And my second comment is. Doing motions on a shared document is a clear meeting law violation, that's an opinion. And. I would also urge to not have open meeting law violations, that any even administrative changes are done by one person. Not multiple people. So that's my input on that.
Okay, those are good suggestions, maybe we can take administrative changes, I guess, on paper. Or in some, or anyway, we do have line numbers on those sections, on those documents and give them to Sue. To do administrative changes. Sue, does that work? I mean. How else are we gonna get them done by one person?
Right. That's why a consultant is so important.
Didn't do some of those things.
We never got to this point, unfortunately.
Well, we, I think it's there, okay, I totally agree with you, Mary, as well, that the, my track changes idea, comment idea is probably a bad idea. So let's make motions for each of us, for, so this means a lot of work for, if we're gonna tackle. So we work from the back, why don't we start with eleven and go ten, nine, eight, seven, six? So we'll do, so we, next week, I, I, I think that's an excellent idea, Christine, to do the back, but more difficult ones first.
Well, times, can we just have like true working sessions, like in person as a board? And like you there, we're typing and doing it live and like hybrid. That's what we should be doing, not, I mean. Tuesday morning, Tuesday evening meetings should be everyone talking, changing live so people can see it, so.
Yep, Chris, Ron wants to have the next meetings, all of our next meetings be in person with the hybrid, you know, screen thing. And he just didn't want to do it, I said, let's do it during in September, which he had said and he wanted to do, be there. But I totally agree that we should get a room and do this in person, I'm a hundred percent in agreement. And with a screen.
I don't think we need to send them to one person, I think we can be in a room, in a true working session to get this done and. Don't need to violate any open meeting laws, thanks.
Okay, and including like changing its to its or. Maybe we can get those typos to Sue. We, I think it's pretty clean, but, and then she can show us that we track changes as start. If you have typos, so then I envision some motions to address these articles. That's what, that's the only way we're gonna get, we don't have agreement, I think. So the motion might be to. Table an article, might be to amend it, or might be to let it stand. But it has to be as motions, that's what, that's the only way we're gonna get through this, as when we don't have full. You know, we all have a lot of opinions about this, which is great, based on our experience. So, I think, so the, Christine has suggested, and I certainly agree, that next Tuesday, the twentieth. We would meet in person. Public meeting. And I'll let someone advise us about whether we need to have the screen, the public. Zoom piece as well in the background, that's kind of hard to do, but nonetheless, Greg can tell us what the rules are. And that we start with article eleven and go to ten, nine, eight. Does that make sense to people? Or do you wanna?
Can we post for the whole thing, if we're just on a roll, we can keep going, not to restrict ourselves, okay, great, thanks.
Happy to post the whole thing. That would be optimistic, that'd be great. I'll stay on, I'll stay till midnight if we could get it done, that would be great. Laura.
Process question, and I appreciate having the work plan, we may debate the. The content in it, but it's really helpful to me to say, okay, what, you know, how would he get from here to there? Have a roadmap and tell me when my homework is for each week, otherwise it's a colossal endeavor of like, I'm supposed to read this all by next Tuesday. So, I, I also like the suggestion of working backwards to front. Process question is, are we then, are you, are you suggesting or is what we're doing. Reopening the articles that were previously voted? Because we're changing them or just because we think that we should ask the board one more time? I'm just, I'm just not, just looking for some clarity there, the purpose of reopening and reverting.
I think there are a couple of things. One is, as Christine suggested, to table an article, certainly would be one discussion. The second would be to make changes based on input. Thought over time, input from people we've talked to. We mentioned Sarah Melish had some, a couple of good ideas. That she gave us input on that. And a third area would be just greater. A correction that we've identified. So I think it's tedious, but I think that the board, we're hearing that people don't want to have. That, those are the kinds of things people want to talk about. I'm hoping that, you know, adult entertainment, maybe we can. Move forward quickly and two of these others, so it's really only like nine, eight or nine that are more substantive. But we have heard some, some good input, I think.
I would like Sarah to come to our Tuesday meeting if at all possible. I mean, I think we should invite that so we can all hear her comments.
Certainly can, I think we want to have a working session and I think Chris and I got a pretty good sense of her. And I, we just met with her today, I think in her case, those, we can write those up as suggested amendments. I think they were all.
There directly, I, I'm not that I don't trust you, I just like a pattern, like it just, it's all hearsay. Like I, if Sarah, the Chair of the ZBA had something to say, I feel like Sarah should send the entire board something. It's, doesn't feel like this is like great communication through the board. It's not direct communication, it's, I don't know, I, I don't, I'm not happy with it, I don't feel good about it. I mean, I don't know why that happened and the whole board doesn't hear like a memo from Sarah. I don't understand how this occurred or why we all don't hear about it.
Meeting, we, Chris and I said we were gonna meet with, I believe we said we were gonna meet with Sarah Melish, I don't know. It's, we're trying to get this done, Christina, and. This is a, there's no, we have not amended anything, any proposed amendments will come before this board. And we have eleven articles that have been voted at this point. So just because we don't have, agreed, we didn't have a majority vote, I would love to have a majority vote on more of them, that would be great. But we have voted them and. So.
Sarah, I think you mean.
If somebody has, wants to have a conversation with. Anybody and come, bring it back to us, I think that's fine. If you have, you know. A suggestion that are within the scope, the other thing is we have to keep our, our amendments within the scope of the. Public hearing that we've already had, the public notice. But, so, so for example, the question about adding a. As-built requirement for common driveways, for example, whether that's good or bad, but just, that's outside of the scope. We can't tackle that in this round because it wasn't within the scope of our public notice. You understand what I'm saying?
I'm, I'm sorry, I think that's, I think something like that would simply be something you put on your. It doesn't need to be in zoning, it can just be in your application regulations that do not require a vote.
But we're not gonna take that up in this process, whatever, I, I was using that as an example, but if we want to amend zoning. In a section we never touched, we can't do that here, even if it's the best idea ever unless we have a public hearing. So, I think we've got enough on our, it's my opinion, somebody wants to take the, has something that they really want to advance. And wants to take on the public hearing, so, and all that, and we can fit it in, that's great.
Can I just say a little something about this? I, I think it should be absolutely clear that we have voted a majority vote, not by consensus, but a majority vote. To approve these eleven articles. And unless there's a motion and a vote to do something else, that's what's going to town meeting. So it's gonna be incumbent on people who don't want these things to happen, to make motions to stop them. Otherwise, the train is gonna go ahead. I just want that to be clear, I, I, you know, it's not on the planning board per se to change these. It's for members of the planning board to make motions and get them approved by a vote of the board to change them.
I also have confidence that when we all dig into this, that we will all, each one of us will find a way to improve these. So, and we all, probably will all find things that will. Not be in agreement with everybody else.
That's also true, we're, we're never gonna have a perfect zoning bylaw, we could just do the best we can and make more adjustments in future years. The, the zoning that we have now is atrocious, it's terrible, so whatever we do is gonna be better than what that is.
I guess my number one concern is that when you look back at what we started out to do. I guess my number one concern is that when you look back at what we started out to do, what the document that we have is not what we said we're gonna do. We changed it a lot and we tried to implement some other things and some people's personal. Chris, I would like to speak, Chris, I would like to speak. Thank you. And that is my concern. I feel like this process was a little derailed. And my concern is that the public has recognized that and that we haven't taken the time to step back and listen to them and take a pause on some of the things that wasn't in our initial charge. That is my concern. Yes, we all voted on it. And many of the things that we all didn't agree, but my concern is that we haven't listened and haven't taken a pause. Thank you.
Okay. One of the things, um, I'm just gonna uh, take an aside for a second. And Christine pointed out that when you don't have your video on, it is easy to be interrupted because it's hard to see your facial expressions. So that's, I know you're, you're having internet issues, but just it is a little, I can, I can see with, you know, I can feel for Ron. Um, just so you know that that's um, any of us, when we have our videos off, it's hard to see your facial expressions. And it's such a hard format anyway, having not chaired something in this format before. So I know you, uh, hopefully we'll all be in person in a week, which would be great. Um, Laura. I'm gonna stop sharing for a minute.
Uh, yeah, trying to get my train of thought. Um, so I feel, so here we are, nine o'clock, and we're trying to get through this. I think that the open discussion is happening right now and will continue to happen. So this is a version one of the work plan. Can we consider this a kind of living document? And um, it's a start on how we're gonna move forward.
Yes.
Let's make a decision about it.
Yep.
And then move on to communications.
Let's, let's do that. Um, if there's a, um, yes, it's a living document, and I encourage people to add in additional tasks that, that, oh, and also volunteer to help get them done. Um, Sue, anything new?
Yeah, yes, thank you, Sarah. I, I just want to um, to say that I think it's really important that while we hear feedback, we hear it from a very small number of people. And I think it's incumbent upon the planning board to do the work that they think is important and right, and then take it to the entire public and not just the minority of the thousands of residents. Um, we're not getting anywhere near um, reactions from that many, but I think they all deserve to be able to vote and make a decision on whether they think that the work that the planning board has done is appropriate. So I just, I, I have a hard time allowing the fear um, to not let you put, to not let the board put forth the work that it thinks that it's done well. So I just would really encourage you to let the town decide, um, and all of the town, and not just the, the few that choose to write in. Thank you.
But I think that when somebody has made a specific suggestion on section, whatever, if I or Chris or Laura or Mary think that it's a good idea, that we also have an obligation to bring that forward to the extent.
Yeah, of course, of course. Yeah, no, I'm not, that's when we ignore it. I'm saying that the, that the work, the the body of work itself should be judged by the, by the entire community.
Okay, um, can we jump to the communications plan for the, um, which is uh, shown here in this column. The proposal uh, is to have four cricket articles. Um, a um, social media, have an open house, um, and then we will talk about what the open house actually looks like in a couple of weeks. But that's thought in terms of just uh, like at the school cafeteria or something like that, where it's a little bit more informal and we can explain to people various articles. And however we do that, it's open, certainly open to ideas from people. Um, or even um, any, a uh, non-board members who want to be in touch with one of us about ideas about how to do that would be great. Um, and that a postcard just saying, um, and I think there's a draft that Tiffany has started, but what we'll look at um, and try to finalize um, Monday, the twenty-sixth. Cricket article is in our packet for tonight uh, with, on the communications site and the risks and opportunities table. We'd like to get that up on the website. So, um, obviously, social media will uh, kick in as we get a little closer to our open house. Um, when we make any changes to the articles, those will go on the website and that final material will go on the website and at the library and at town hall. Um, and then we would have an open house. And um, a last cricket article before the town meeting. So that's the general plan. Um, there may be more things that we should do. We try to keep it within the time and capacity that we have. Um, and we could ask Tiffany right now, maybe it'd be interesting to know how many people have actually gone to our website. I mean, it's not like people haven't done, you know, I know, I, I don't think it's getting huge traffic. We're not getting specific comments or questions. So I think people are, it's a lot of material for people to digest, and so that's the, hence the reason for the cricket articles. So uh, comments, Laura.
Mary had her hand up first, I.
Go ahead, Mary.
Um, I, it's off topic because I had my hand up from before, but I, I do want to just, the town planner stated that, you know, we're hearing from a minority of people. And it's just not true. I speak to people every day about the zoning bylaws. It might be a minority of people that send in emails, but I think it's just very disingenuous to say that we're not looking at a large scope of, of opinions. Um, I know for myself, I am reaching out and I am getting a lot of opinions. So um, when I do speak, it's with a lot of people behind me. So I, I don't want people that are listening in thinking that um, these are individual opinions, that it is a resident opinions. Um, just wanted to state that.
Okay, Laura.
You had asked us to review the cricket article and the table before tonight's meeting. And you asked us to make changes and track changes in the document on SharePoint.
We'll pull this up in a minute.
Did that. So, and I think at least one other person's made some comments. So do you want to go over those tonight?
Yeah, I do. Um, I'd like to get any additional comments on just this as the general plan, any other comments of things for the communications plan before we talk, take the two uh, topics, additional, last topics.
Can I ask one follow-up question then on the work plan and process for the articles that we're going through, the existing zoning and the proposed zoning by article? Are they printouts?
Right now.
On hall, or should we just, should we just go um, from the links that you sent us? Did you hear my question?
Uh, say the question again.
Yeah, sorry. I think there's a little internet disruption. Um, for the articles that we're reviewing, the existing and the proposed zoning. Are there printouts at town? I know we printed out previous version. I just want to make sure I am marking from the current. Uh, so is the best way to get that printed version just to look at the links that you sent and go from there or are they?
There's a footer. Uh, that has a, I can, um, the, the latest versions are the versions uh, from June. Final motions and articles, the PDFs. So here's Article ten, which is, and if you go to that article, there's a May twenty-third date on the bottom. So you should be looking at a May twenty-third date with, with um, with line numbers. Okay? And I only renamed the files. I didn't rename the headers when I was just putting them up there. So, God, I just realized that's probably the more confusing, again, confusing. I don't know how to do this without any, I, I, I'm doing the best. We're doing the best we can. So you should have a May twenty-third date and everything should have a line number because we're gonna take motions by line number. And if you don't, um, make sure you get a, a printout copy. Um, we can have one made, put for you, put at town hall. So let's get four copies put at town hall, five copies put at town hall of the latest. So we make sure that if anybody's confused, there won't be any delay in them getting it.
I'm sorry, there's copies of what? Of all the articles again?
All the articles. They should be at the town clerk, right? Just go copy them.
In the library.
In the library. Um, so it shouldn't ta, take, I have a copy. I can drop up and get a copy. It shouldn't.
Okay, sorry. I'm not trying to make work, just
No, no, I, I, I was gonna bring that up. No, I was gonna bring that up. So thank you. It should be May twenty-third date, and they should have line numbers. Okay? The, the motion at the top is gonna be old. Okay, um, but that's a good point. Thank you. Uh, oh, I'm trying, I was trying to share that. Sorry, I was just. Am I sharing? Hard to tell. There we go. Sorry. So I'm pointing to my screen while I'm, you can't see it. So line numbers and down here at the bottom, May twenty-third uh, date. I can't make that any bigger right now. So right down here, it's May twenty-third, and then there are line numbers. Okay? So um, let's go, uh, um, Christine.
So yes, I guess my first, are we talking about the article next? That, that was my next comment. So the article, I think is great, nothing wrong with it, but the communication plan assumes that we're going forward with every article. And I feel the last conversation that we had, we weren't, we were talking about maybe not going forward that. So this article to me assumes that we're going forward with everything. Then we're gonna change our communication plan next week if we decide not to, like, that's what's concerning to me about.
Okay, that's a good point. But um, maybe what we should do is say we are reconsidering, we will be evaluating them, some sort of, um, let me share this, maybe uh, to your point, add a clarifier in there that um, simply makes that uh, makes that point that um, the next step, something about next steps here. Um, that we're gonna be meeting um, in um, and we may be making small changes or, you know, to take something off the list. If we were, you're, I think you're saying, what happens if we don't advance a, a particular article? Then we don't advance a particular article. It's not like we're introducing anything new, right? We're simply removing something. So is that, I guess the only problem is if somebody's passionate about one of the particular things, then they'd be disappointed. But I mean, I hear your point, but um, do you want to hold up communications to, to make that point? Or is there a um, a way that we can add a sentences, sentence uh, here that perhaps um, simply says that we're gonna have something about, we're gonna be meeting regularly to make some, you know, to revisit these, um.
I think in the spring, we actually had a conversation about maybe taking some of the controversial issues off, putting them off until spring and getting, you know, the reformatting and the things that we needed to get done, done. And we're not having that conversation right now. I feel like we're just trying to push this all forward. And I, I personally, I'm not on board with that. I feel like we're gonna get pushback. And if that's what the majority of the board wants to go forward with, we'll just see how the cards lie. But I don't feel like we're listening to why we really didn't have a spring meeting. So we want to keep going forward.
So what do you suggest? What's your specific suggestion with regard to the cricket article that we have had?
Feel like we should have actually had a, a plan by now of what we're gonna go forward in the next three weeks, three months, less than three months. Like, I feel like as a board, we don't know what we're going to advance. And before, I think we should know that before we write an article.
Okay. Um, that, that's your opinion. I think um, I disagree. I think we should go ahead with an article that is um, a generic article that tells, you know, reminds people where we're at and reflects the fact that it's an ongoing process. Um, we welcome public, you're here, it says we welcome public questions and comments at our workshop or by email. So.
It doesn't address why we postponed the spring town meeting at all. I guess that's my biggest concern.
We are where we are. It's September twelfth, and um, if we don't do these things in November, then we move them to April and I might lose my mind. Um, that doesn't mean that that's a bad thing, but I think, um, so what is your specific suggestion? Are you suggesting that we don't hold, that we don't propose cricket article this week? Or what is your specific?
I think it needs to be
in your packets since
Like, stay tuned. We're on board, we're
Okay, you are gonna
And I do really feel like commenting and going back and forth is a bit um, of open meeting violation. So I feel like I need to reserve myself to meetings to express myself in public. I feel like if I wasn't, um, I mean, do you want me to share it with you? And then the public doesn't hear my opinion? I guess that's my concern. So if it, I know I've had it for three weeks. I'm, I'm not on board with several of the items. And should I write my own article? I guess next week, I guess, is that what you're saying? I mean, that I'm concerned about these articles going forward and the input and the research that we've done as a board? I mean, I understand that your opinion.
Can I clarify article? I think you're using article in two ways. So I think we're getting confused. And let's call it a cricket uh, press and an article on town meeting. So we, we describe, because there's article is two different things. It's an article at the cricket.
This is from
Article on
He's, he's signing this from Chris only. So Chris can write what he wishes. This is not going to be a planning board article, correct?
No, this is a proposed planning board article. We're gonna write articles as planning board.
Well, that, that hasn't been in the past.
Well,
Are we gonna vote on this?
That was the goal. We've had this since Thursday. And you, you know, the cricket, the cricket deadlines come. And we want to address that we guys have been really um, clear that you want to edit and write things in public. So this is our chance. What changes do we want to see to this?
I understand, but the last meeting that we had as a planning board, we were going to talk about potentially not going forward with certain articles. So to write a newspaper article to the cricket about, before having that conversation to me, seems completely out of
So how would you suggest this cricket article to reflect your, your, the fact that you're gonna
Always chosen to write these as his own. So I suggest maybe Chris decides as his own.
Um, I'm gonna ask you actually, Christina, to turn your video off. I appreciate you turning it on, but it is, you are breaking up. So we're getting some, a little bit of that problem. So I appreciate it, you turning it on.
I could hear you better, so I thought it was going to be okay. Sorry.
Um, but anyway, um, so this is a draft cricket article for the cricket from the planning board. Your planning board is back working to prepare for special town meeting on November fourteenth, when voters will consider proposals for revisions and additions to the town zoning laws. Many of the changes are simple and make the bylaws easier to understand. Others are based on recommendations made in the master plan. We've had caught public comments. They're listed, the, um, to visit the town website to review the current and proposed regulations and reasons for the modifications. We welcome your input. So we've got matter of formatting, um, changes, clarifying policy, uh, proposed policy change. So that means that they're, at this point, they are proposed. We have a vote by the planning board to put them forward to allow for greater housing density, senior housing, in-law apartments. Um, now, I, my guess is that in this case, you are thinking some, that this is something that you would like to see us table. But at this point, we have voted to move this forward as with all of these. Um, so how do we create, what language sentence do we have? So can we add that would reflect where we are in time? Yes, Laura, go ahead. Thank you.
My suggestion, this article talks about all the work that we're doing as a planning board, um, which I think is true. Whether, whether the board decides to vote um, every single article to November town meeting or seventy-five percent of the articles or three of the articles. This is all the work that we're comprehensively working on, and our intent is to take it before the town to vote on. So I think everything that's in there So I think everything that's in there that's stated is true. Maybe an additional sentence could be, um. Put in that says the final articles, you know, the final warrant with the, um, articles for town meeting. This November will be posted by date X. And here's, and here's the date by which the planning board will make a, um, will vote. To put for the final articles for November 16th town meeting. But here are all the things that we're working on. I think that's a true statement. And gives us some room to continue the work. I think it's important to communicate though, and I think this article is is good and it doesn't take any editorial position. It's just kind of stating the work that we've been doing. There's a message in the chat from Christina. She says, I like that. So it sounds like that.
Yeah, final, um, for the planning board, how about we just even say the the board, oh my god, board. Is continuing, we'll make a separate paragraph, its work and the final. Uh, uh, Warren, I'm not gonna call him Warren. People don't know what that is. Zoning changes. Will be available. By October 18th. On the website. Round Hall and Library.
And maybe just a sentence that in the meantime, the planning board is working to determine those final articles. And you mentioned that we're gonna have a public workshop and more will be coming about that.
It's up above.
Okay, so the final, final articles will be determined after that public workshop.
Thank you, Laura. That's great.
Okay. Great. Um, I'm gonna ask, uh, for a, um, thank you, um, a motion to. Uh, submit this, um, as amended to, um, the cricket for our first article.
Sarah, I've had my hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mary. Yep, go ahead.
Um, so, yes, thank you, Laura. I think that's a good suggestion. And I was gonna do something similar because at the end of the first paragraph, it states that the board welcomes public questions and comments. And I think we need to make it clear that we will be considering and perhaps incorporating any of those comments. So residents can know that if they. Speak their opinions that they're actually being, um, you know, listened to and and taken into advisement. I would also recommend that under the proposed policy changes include that we clarify which articles are being proposed. That are by right. Um, I think that isn't mentioned. And so it's, it can be misleading if that's not clear. And I would like to see some of the, um. Subjective words taken out on the second page. There's, there's. Then I appreciate Chris doing this article. It's great. But I, you know, when, when it says another proposal is meant to deal with the vaccine problem of changes. And unnecessary obstacles and things like that. Those are all opinions and I'd really like to stick to data and facts. There's, there's a handful of those. And so I think, um, if we could clean those off, that would be good.
So can I change the vexing? So just deal with changes to non-conforming use. Um, that is properties that do not comply with current dimensional regulations.
Yeah. And so when it says the current special permit requirement can be an unnecessary obstacle to property owners who want to make reasonable changes. Again, that's, that's, it's not always true, right? Um, it's not always.
Get rid of that sentence, Chris? For the moment. To move this, to keep this, I think it's, um. You could say the current special permit requires property owners, um. Get a special permit or something. The current special permit requirements.
That a special permit is required currently by property owners who want to make changes to their non-conforming properties.
Sure, that's good.
That's good.
Um, I can, and, um.
They got reasonable changes.
And just put, and just leave it there. So this is about the impact study, um. This is.
Uh, this, are you responding to my comment? My comment was just semantics. We sometimes call a thing a memo and we then we sometimes call it an impact study. They refer to the planning board's website and then the town's website. I'm just trying to make it as clear as possible for people reading the article. What we're referring to.
Okay, those are, um. So can I suggest that, uh, we leave out the impact study for tonight? And move that to a discussion another night, Chris?
Is that the table?
No, I don't think so. This is the impact say that Chris had proposed back in the spring. That I don't believe he's received any comments on. But I do think. I'd like to see us formatted at least with some headings and and I was supposed to give you comments, but I didn't. So I don't see as charged.
I think we briefly discussed it at a meeting, um, and we were gonna discuss it further. So I think you're right to remove it because we haven't really agreed upon the content of that. If I'm thinking of the right table, is it the draft proposed zoning by law changes? Table?
No, that's separate. That's what we're, that's different. This is, I think you're talking about the, the link, the several page memo that, um, you wrote. Right, Chris, the impact stuff. Yeah.
Yeah.
I think I'm gonna suggest that we all review that and give him feedback on that at the. Next meeting and put that on the work plan for them for coming up.
Does everybody have it? Is that available?
We'll put it in the communications folder.
Okay.
So, okay, or so.
Uh, Christina had a question in the chat. Let me read it to you. Will the cricket article have live links when you view it electronically?
It's up to Erica. I don't know. Yeah, but it probably will. Okay. All right, um, now can I take, uh, let's see, the only other thing is that. Town's website, let's call them all the towns website. We deleted those. Okay. Um, let's make sure. We'll just double check that the website is clearly. Okay. Um, can I take a, can I have a motion to advance this, um? I think we're gonna. Gary doesn't make a specific suggestion here, so I'm gonna not worry about that. To ask the cricket to, um, post cricket article number one on the planning board.
Um, there, there's some weird chromatical things going on between my edits and Gary's.
Gary.
His, my, my type, my edits are in blue, I think, and his are in red. And that where you just were other changes that have little or no effect on other than to clarify existing zoning policy.
I think.
Just delete that on, I guess. It's reading kind of strangely.
Why is that? Gary doesn't. He, he, what he does is you strike out instead of actual track changes.
Perhaps you'd be comfortable just letting Chris figure out where it doesn't.
I would, I would. Everybody else is okay with that.
Yeah, I think this is not a track change. This is like. I think.
Um, I made mine in reviewing.
Yeah, I did. I think it's, I think it's.
I don't know how Gary made this.
He adds. I'm gonna reject that change and then ask would that get reviewed? So.
I like the idea of, um, Chris just.
It needs a final.
Ending for grammar. And, yeah.
So Sarah, can you send this to me as an email attachment?
Yeah, um, yeah, it's, I will. Okay, um, I'd like a motion to advance cricket article number one this.
I'll move till we advance it.
Sarah, you just muted yourself.
Thank you. Um, second. Laura.
Seconded.
Okay, um, all in favor, um, Chris?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Thank you. Mary?
Yes.
Great. And I'll vote yes. Thank you. Um, so we're gonna try to get the next one for Tuesday. Um, so now everybody knows it's coming. We'll try to get that in by Wednesday or Thursday. But we have plenty of homework for next Tuesday with the the articles and trying to come up with some motions. I will try to come up with a format for motions, um, so that we can maybe put them on a screen or something. I'll I'll try to come up with something. So, um, all right, the the other thing, last thing that, um, we wanted to, I have to stop sharing. Um, to talk about. The scales.
I'm still here.
Great.
Damn it.
Oh, yes, here's the, this, um, impact table. Um, this is.
Draft?
Yes, um. So, um. We've, again, um. This is one of the things that I, we have to fix here is that Diane does not want us to put new. We just, we can only put the zoning change here. Uh. Or we cannot put the entire section. She does not want us to have a by, two sets of bylaws. One, which is the old and one which says new, you know, in its entirety because she thinks it's very confusing. So we can have to put it as the article or the motion. Um, so that's just one thing that has to get fixed. Um, so I think this is, this is, um. Great. Thank you again, Chris for, um, and Sue for proposing this. And Laura's made a few significant, um, wording changes. In because this is on the website, what I would like to suggest is that we move it to the website. And that, um, we can visit it from time to time to Christine's earlier point, Christina's earlier point. If we were to make a change to one of these, any of these, move it to some other time. We can then modify it quickly here. Um, so that's where we are in that. Okay. Um, Mary, comments?
Yeah, we briefly discussed this at one meeting and, um, I raised some concerns then. We haven't really ever voted this in to be posted. Um, my concern again is the. Risks, um, become opinions when there's no data. So, um, you know, and I, this is just notes I had from, I don't know, a month and a half ago. But like with the non-conforming, you know, the risk says the risk of no action will continue to bog down the ZBA with a large number of special permits. Well, I looked. Over the ZBA, non-conforming special permits, and they've done 60 over the past five years. And that equates to 12 cases a year, which equates to one a month. So it's by no means bogging down the ZBA. So if we want to come up with different risks. With actual data that would support that, I think that's good. But I, I am very uncomfortable with opinions getting into these risks. So I, I would not propose that this be out on the website until we have clear data. And I know that's not what anybody wants to hear. But again, I mean, when you drill down to the numbers and you've got one a month, I don't think that's bogging anybody down. So there might be all sorts of reason, um. You know what, why somebody's proposing this non-conforming, but bogging down the ZBA isn't one of them.
Well, not bogging it down might also be an opinion. I mean, yeah, so to your point.
Well, but the ZBA is there to to look at special permits. So if one special permit is bogging them down, then yeah, we might have to reassess what the CBA is doing. But, um.
Okay, so that's one specific, are there other opinions that you think are, um?
Well, I haven't thoroughly reviewed it because it's never really been on an agenda to review and discuss.
It's on today's agenda. It was in the memo that I sent you. It's on the, um, um, communications plan. And it was in the. So.
Um, but I, it doesn't say that we're taking changes in comment. So I'm I'm happy to review it. But again, I I just can't go on the website stating these things if it's not. Backed up with data.
Okay, um, I'm gonna suggest, hate to push this off, but that we are gonna take up, people are gonna.
Can I, can I make a suggestion?
Yeah. Go ahead.
So, just as we did with the cricket article, and it may be that we're just all saturated and it's too late tonight to try to do this. But, um, I think that if we all read this beforehand, uh, come with our suggested specific edits. To, um, scrub anything that we feel like might be editorializing versus just trying to present the information. Um, I I do believe strongly there's a place for this table. I think it's a great way to summarize. Um, the pros and cons, opportunities and risks, however you want to call it, of zoning. And we, we may not all agree on the specifics of everyone, but we can probably get to consensus of something that we think is acceptable. When I hire a consultant in my line of work, I look to them and their professional expertise and judgment. To give me their analysis of risks and opportunities. And I think we're doing that for the town. I mean, we're all deputized here to do the work of the planning board, look at these zoning changes, make recommendations. And then say, um, here are, here are the potential consequences if we act or don't act. And so I like this format. Um, I, I did hear, um, and I made a few comments in the document. Uh, myself about making it more, you know, we've all been looking at all these changes for a while. But making it more clear, clearer for people who are reading it about when we're making a change. Substantive change to kind of how it works now. So if there's something that's was as a right by before. Or or was by special permit before, and now we're proposing it be as a right, then let's say that clearly, I think this is the document to do it, not in the cricket. The cricket article should be more general about, here's where we're at, but we shouldn't try to get into the specific language of any of those documents. I think this is the place to do it. And it's really a highlight and kind of a cheat sheet for 90% of the town is not gonna want to read these articles. Because they're, they go on and on, right? So, you know, just looking at this, you can probably go past like, okay, I don't care that much about districts so long as it's the same. But when I get to swimming pools, I could, I needed a special permit before for swimming pool. Now it's proposing that I get one by right. Do I feel good about that or don't I? And I'm gonna come to the open house and talk about that. So I think if we could get this out before the open house with enough time for people to look at it and really go at what. You know, maybe this is where we focus next week. Let's go at the substantive changes that we think people are gonna care about. All the difficult ones that we're about to look at and maybe any of the other ones that. And maybe any of the other ones that Sarah Melish or anybody else has raised before, like non-conforming uses going from special permit. CBA variance, whatever it was to as of right, and let's highlight those for people at the high level here. And give them a chance to dig in deeper to the reference articles. That's my feeling.
Okay. I think that's a good suggestion. I am gonna ask people to read this before next meeting and comment and make. Highlight, you know, if you want to make some suggested delete opinions. I feel like we need an editor on the, some stuff that if we had like a. A. An editor. I mean, I feel like a little bit that we're trying to. You know, at this point. Also, I just want to make sure we're perfect, not the enemy, the good here. So if anybody has a thought about who might help us with. Being a, a, a little bit. Who can really edit these things to help us make them effective? And then. So. Not that they haven't had some editing already, but, um. Okay, so we're gonna. Kick this down the road one week. It's, let's get this, the other thing too, um, and I think it, it, Laura's suggestion is. I heard a couple of things. One is take this up next week after we've decided what we're doing with 11 through six. And then it would at least give us the opportunity if Christina's idea that we're gonna push some certain things off. Prevails, then that will make, uh, one of the boxes go away. Um, for example, that, um, we could say we're gonna push this off till April or, or, or whatever, um. It'll more accurate, might more accurately reflect things. Um, I'm also gonna. Suggest that next week we don't take time on typos and other things that we. Do as Laura suggests, sort of, maybe big picture and then. Substantive. Changes. So. Not sure how to structure that, but. Laura, go ahead.
Well, I think if we all read it first and come with the things that we. Think that people are concerned about or that we've heard, you know, maybe that's the place to focus, um, anything that was, I think anything that was. Requiring a, a special permit or variance before and is now by right, that's one place to focus. I was gonna ask if maybe when we go to the select board would. You know, Kathy Bellata was one of our, one of the people who suggested we kind of frame it and maybe. Could we put this up in front of the select board and say, you know, here's where we're going, what do you think? Not to have them be, you know, editors, but. Perhaps she could be another reader of it. I'm just thinking about someone who is. Uh, another set of eyes that's maybe a different audience. It's not staring at it all the time like we are.
I think, yeah, I think, um, I think one of the real challenges we have here. Is the fact that at least some of our board really wants to edit everything. In public. And I, I think it is very common for a subgroup of a board. To write public communications. Um, that is a common practice and, um. I, I just don't know how we have time, how we have the bandwidth. To. To do this as a board at the level of detail that we just did the cricket article and I would say. You know, so. I still think a subcommittee to. Work on this and. Is a solution we need to get to, or we need some outside editing or, or. Something. I don't know what the answer is. Um, Kathy, you have a suggestion on that?
I ju, I just heard my name mentioned and I, um, just will offer my help to the board in, in whatever capacity. You know, you'd like. You guys are doing important work. There's not a lot of time. Um, if I can be of help, just let me know.
Would the, um, board feel comfortable with Kathy and Chris sitting down? It's not a planning, uh, coming back with the next draft. To maybe get Kathy's input on what, what she thinks is sort of opinion and how to. Tighten this up a little bit. Laura, uh, Mary?
Uh, my first go around with that, I would suggest it stays with the board and then once we've got it more finalized. You know, can bring to Kathy or whomever else. Um, I think a subcommittee should have kind of happened all along. Um, obviously, subcommittees still have to be public meetings, so people can listen in and see what people are discussing. So that just came out from town council, um, so. You know. It, it's not a, i- i- it would be out in the open still, so you know, rather than having seven people discussing it, it's maybe three people, but it's still. Is, is public, can be publicly viewed.
So we need a, maybe, so who's volunteering? Do I have this volunteer group to, for two or three people between now and in the next week before Tuesday? To meet together on a posted meeting on Thursday or Friday and, and work on this? If that's the only way we can do it is, I don't, I, I just don't, I can't imagine that we're gonna get through everything we have to get through. And we, we, it's not, I don't think it's, it's gonna happen when we have town meeting in November or February. It's the same problem. This is just the work. Has to get done. So do I have any volunteers? Chris has done a great. Job of taking this to this point. Do I have volunteers who want to meet together in town meeting and a posted meeting and, and, and work on these? Outside of the other Tuesday workshops?
I, I would say that I would like to. I just have no time.
Laura?
I was gonna try and volunteer Mary and Chris and Kathy to meet together because I think that would be a great trio and I. Think it's a lot to ask that happened this week, but maybe it can go on kind of a parallel track.
I put something in the chat. I'm available Thursday or Friday to meet with Chris and Kathy. Not sure if that came across clear.
This is Kathy. I'm available to meet on Friday.
I could meet Earth Friday. Let's post something for this, to talk about this table. And, um, on Friday, and I'm gonna ask though that the rest of us. Really try to accept the work of the small group.
Sarah, are you asking, um, Gail to post that as a public hearing, meeting and for notes to be taken? Meeting minutes for them?
Yeah, I think if it has to be a post meeting, it has to have minutes taken, the minutes to be the, the table, um.
So can we just, I think we may need to, um, establish a subcommittee. We may not be able to meet if we don't. Or agree to anything or talk or vote if we don't have quorum.
You have quorum now that you can create a subcommittee.
Exactly, that's what my point is.
I'll move that we form the subcommittee and that we meet on Friday morning. And the meeting. Posted at 10 o'clock on, in town hall.
And do we have to say it's on the subcommittee? It's, uh, Chris, Christina and Sue.
Not me.
Kathy Bellata.
Okay. Great. For the purposes of the, um, risks and opportunities table.
Kathy Bellata cannot be on your subcommittee. She's not a member of your committee.
She can be.
She can attend, yeah. I don't think you need to call her out.
All right, I will come on. I can probably come on Friday if we do it at nine thirty or ten. So, subcommittee is Sarah, Chris and Christine on Saturday, Friday morning at ten. Okay, uh, Chris has made a motion. Um, do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, um, Mary?
Yes.
Chris? Laura?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Okay, great. We'll try that. Yeah, let's try to get this up. That would be great, um. Okay, I think, um. I need to then, uh, make a motion to continue the public hearing for the purposes of discussing the zoning changes. To. September. Tw- Tuesday, September 20th at 6:30 PM. Um, I'll take a motion, uh, roll call, uh, Laura?
Yes.
Continuing the public hearing, uh, Chris? Is that a yes?
Yes.
Mary? Yes.
Yes.
Uh, Christina?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Please, um, make.
Second on that motion.
Oh, I thought I seconded.
Okay.
Maybe that was the subcommittee, sorry.
Okay. So the, um, in-person meeting coming up will be in town hall. Um, Gail, we're gonna have to post, um, adding in Friday at 10 AM for a subcommittee. Um, I'll send you an agenda. Tomorrow. And an agenda for Tuesday's meeting, but zoning 11, 10, 9, 8, 7. Six, maybe.
Get it all the way, right?
All the way.
All the way. All the way back to one.
If we can get all the way to one, we'll be just like doing a dance here, so I'll bring cookies. So actually, maybe it would be good to bring some food. Food would be good. Um, okay, and, um, to just make note of those meetings, please. I know it's a lot, but. Uh, planners report, any, um, comments on the planners for questions? Sue, anything you want to highlight?
Um, no, I will take questions.
Um, am I still, I'm not still sharing? Okay, um, any comments? All right, hearing none, any liaison reports that?
I just want to report, uh, from the Affordable Housing Trust that the RFP has been sent out to developers. I think I. Sent a copy to everybody or put it, had it posted here. Proposals aren't due until November. Um, so we're not gonna hear anything until then, but. At least, uh, we hope to get something back.
Okay. Um.
It's a little off topic, but can I ask Sue, have we applied for any grants or heard back from anything from like the wave bearing or the place making? Hasn't even, any progress on that?
We've not heard back on either of those two grants that we expect that it would be, um, in September, but nothing yet.
Okay. Um, any other matters that had not been previously anticipated?
Laura has her hand up.
I missed the planners' report. I don't, didn't see it in our folder. Did it come some other way?
It's called, um. It has a little bit different name. Play PB update, September 12.
PB update. Oh, I will look for it. PB update. I must have downloaded it before that got in there. I'll go back and look.
Um, great, and I'll take a motion to adjourn. I'm sure that's what you had your hands up about, Laura.
Yes, yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Uh, Chris? Um, Laura?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Great. Well, thank you, um, everybody for sticking with us. And we'll see some of you on Friday and, um, I will send out some way for us to make motions. It would be good if we can get those in advance. As much as possible, so we can all think about them. Rather than on the fly. So think, think hard about what changes we don't want to make, so. Great. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you all.